Everybody, but Chelsea's not gonna be joining us tonight, so gotta quorum. Don't have the flags up yet, so we're gonna pass on the pledge and go right to the regular agenda. Uh, there was no changes on here, right guys? Hear anything, so.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Can you just make an emotion to approve the regular agenda? Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does the second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, motion carries. All right. Consent agenda. Any last minute, anything there Jim? Be aware of? Nope. Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Sarah, you're good?
Good, thank you.
Yep. All right, then I'm gonna look for a motion to accept. Consent agenda as is.
Make that motion, consent, consent agenda as is.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll go ahead and second if you can hear me.
I can hear you just fine Sarah, thank you. All right. Jeff does a motion, Sarah does a second, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Lost connection? All right, we'll keep rolling here then.
Keep going.
Yeah, we'll get it figured out. Okay, councilman. Minutes from the last meeting. Anybody see anything in there that wasn't? Correct or needed modification? Otherwise I'm gonna look for a motion to accept.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes? February seventh.
All right, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second? Naomi? Who does the second? Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And motion's approved, all right. Public comment. Anybody got anything they wanna chat about tonight? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll go on. Sheriff's report. I didn't get anything Brent, I don't think you did either, so. We'll pick that up the next time around. Um, Veterans Boulevard. Daniel. You wanna start or who wants to kick it off?
I'd still like to kick it off, I'm Dan here with, uh, Chicago. Is there a good place for me to stand? Or?
Where you want.
This is the microphone, so I guess I'll.
It'll pick you up.
Pick you up, don't worry.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, if not, they will let us know, I guarantee it. No, okay, all right, I guess so. We'll find out, all right, well, I know, uh, they're working on the screen there, but, um, I think we could probably just go ahead. I know you have a long agenda here, so.
Sure.
Um, get, get going here, did you receive, um, a little memo here?
Yep, gave them a memo.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, just, sure. So, anyway, I don't have to hand that out then, but, uh, just kinda gives an overview of the study that we've been working on. Um, this study we've been working on since, uh, two thousand twenty, so it's been going on for some time, but, uh, a lot of good collaboration with, uh, different jurisdictions. Um, Horace, Cass County, uh, City of Fargo, um, ourselves. And, uh, I'll just introduce who else we have here as part of the study, so we have Scott Midow from, uh, K L J, who can be consulted with, and then we have Jason Benson, who is attending this meeting from the county, county legislature. Um, also, what you'll notice here on this memo, there is a link to the report. And you can view the full report on, on the website there, I didn't want to send that, it's a large file. And also there is, um, an executive summary, which is about one page, um, boiled down version of the report, which probably is in your pack as well, I got some out.
Right.
Um, anyway, um, I think I might just go ahead here, I did print out a slide and, um, we can see if those, uh, pop up there soon.
And keep going to, if there's, as he's talking, or Scott, if there's a question regarding, or some other construction projects, um, hundred and seventeen or seventy-six avenues, that's, I'm here as the backup.
Yeah, thank you, Dixon. So, um, yeah, let's go ahead and I'll start out with, uh, kinda the purpose of this study. Um, so Veterans Boulevard, as you know, stops at fifty-second Avenue in Fargo. And, um, so the intent of this study is to look at the possible extension of it, another four miles from where it ends at fifty-second, down to a hundredth Avenue South, so, just so south end of Horace here. And, um, also the part of that, we looked at, uh, that existing section with the roundabouts in Fargo from fortieth to fifty-second, to see if anything might need to be changed there, should that extension occur. And so we also have a phased implementation plan at the end of the study, which you can take a look at, it's very useful, um, as we look into the future. Roadway, network, uh, facilities need to be improved and, and when, so we went ahead and put that together in the report as well. Uh, the study was guided by a fifteen-member study review committee. And so like I said, we had representation from the county, um, City of Fargo, City of West Fargo and, uh, Horace. We had, uh, Brentman and some of those meetings, as well as, uh, Jim and, um, and your, your former planning staff there. And, um, so anyway, that was the study review committee, we also had two public engagement opportunities. Uh, one in the fall of twenty twenty and then one in the, yeah, summer of twenty twenty-one. The first one, um, I just wanted to see what, uh, kinda, what the public was looking for, um, what their priorities were in a quarter like this. Um, there's a virtual open house, a survey online, as well as an online interactive map. There is also, uh, use social media, press release and direct mailings to property owners along the corridor to get their feet. So, I think that, I'm not sure if there's any pull up there with, um, PowerPoint, we do have some visuals coming up here.
So Brent, did we actually just lose the connection to the camera?
We lost, uh, connection. I'm trying to get that, oh wait. I'm trying to create a hotspot. On folder, you do have a copy of the PowerPoint?
Yep, I'm looking at it, just.
So they do have the PowerPoint accessible here?
Yep, just for everybody else to.
Yeah, and I'm trying to get it on there and I'm trying to pull, take the computer off to the network here to see.
Do you want me to just go ahead and we'll just, if it comes up, we can maybe just do a quick backtrack on some of it, but we'll just go with what we got.
Ten more, let's do it face blanky.
Birdy mic, yep. Try to do the play-by-play here.
Well, so yeah, um, as Dan mentioned, I'm Scott Midow. So, we looked at Veterans Boulevard, now this, what I'm gonna talk about is all south fifty-second, so fifty-second down to a hundredth. And the first thing we did, we looked at kind of a general alignment to, to select for the corridor. We looked at three alternatives. First one is just to center the roadway on the section line. That's pretty standard practice around here, that was an option really long. The other one is to kind of ride the drain, and we looked at that to, to minimize any undevelopable parcel between Veterans Boulevard and the drain, and maximize development on the side of the road. Third alternative we looked at is to, you know, kind of hug the drain from fifty-second down to sixty-fourth and from there, shift the alignment to the east so that basically the, the west side of the, the right-of-way would be on the section line. And the reason we looked at that is City Bar was already annexed, a two-hundred-foot swath all the way down to about, I believe it's eighty-eighth, maybe it's a quarter mile south of eighty-eighth. So we, we put the roadway in there and then once we got south of that, we centered it back on the section line. With, uh, S R C, uh, we looked at, you know, what options to go forward with, and they just wanted to split the section line. And the biggest reason for that is this is gonna be a multi-jurisdiction roadway, and so funding, maintenance, things like that, it's much easier just to have that set on the section line, so you and Bart will both have, you love it for that. Um, once we got the, the alignment determined, we looked at really three alternatives. All the alternatives that we looked at have one lane in each direction with turn lanes. And that's based on the traffic analysis we did. Those one-lane each direction or turn lanes at certain intersections will accommodate the future traffic of the corridor. Um, alternative one is just, like I said, three-lane section, it's got a ten-foot shared use path on both sides of the road. And then at the major intersections, which we found is eighty-eighth, seventy-sixth and sixty-fourth, are just standard intersections. That would be either signalized or stop sign control, depending on, you know, which one is needed. Um, they have right turn lanes and left turn lanes at the intersections, and again, pretty, pretty standard, oh, up here. Um, the alternative two was same thing, it's, uh, one lane in each direction. Instead of the standard intersections at eighty-eighth, seventy-sixth and sixty-fourth, we looked at roundabouts instead. With the roundabouts that, that includes a raised median through the, through the corridor, and so it would provide access control, but then at every half-mile, we would open that up for full access at the intersections. Um, at the, the eighth mile then, we would have right in, right out. Um, with that again, it's shared use path on both sides of the road, um, one lane each direction. So again, almost same as, as option one, except there's more access control, instead of standard intersection, we have roundabouts. Option three is, suppose you guys have the PowerPoint, so it's gonna be a little easier to explain. Um, but, we looked at three different typical sections for alternative three. And so the first one is from eighty-eighth to, to a hundredth. That is just a standard three-lane section. Um, that, that's what we looked at down there. There are roundabouts at all the major intersections, so eighty-eighth, seventy-sixth, sixty-fourth. Typical section B was from eighty-eighth to seventy-sixth, typical section A is from seventy-sixth to sixty-fourth. We'll go through them. Um, again, as I mentioned, typical section A, just a three-lane section with shared use paths on both sides. Once we get into typical section B, that's, it's a little more unique. What we looked at was, um, based on Fargo's growth and Horace, it looks like a little more dense, uh, road, dense, commercial and residential on the sides, or along the roadway from eighty-eighth to seventy-sixth. And so what we looked at was more of a, kind of a transit-oriented section. And we kinda mirrored with, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Seventeenth Street in Charleswood neighborhood in West Fargo, it's kinda got a front and road system, so that's what we looked at. You still have your throughput, it would be one lane in each direction, there would be access control, but then we incorporated parking and kind of a front and road system to that. Um, again, that, it has full access every quarter mile, parking on both sides of the road. It also has more pedestrian facilities, we have a wider pedestrian area on each side of the road. We include, you know, ten-foot shared use path, but then also kind of a walking area as well. This would be the most expensive alternative, just, I mean, there's, you know, four lines of curb and gutter, there's more pavement, there's more pedestrian features. So that's, there's that one. Typical section C is from seventy-sixth to sixty-fourth. And what this does, is this actually slides the center line of the roadway to the east within the two-hundred-foot right-of-way. And the reason we looked at that in this area was because this is, in that monitor, the, the drain twenty-seven hangs up close to Veterans Boulevard. And so with that, we looked at Horace's long range, and that is green space right there. So we wanted to maximize that green space, and the, the shared use path on the west side of the road actually meandered a little more. And so that helped play into that, again, it's two-hundred-foot right-of-way, so we had space to do that. We pushed the road to the east and then we'd incorporate parking, it would still be a three-lane section. And then from sixty-fourth up to fifty-second, which is typical section A again, which is your standard, three-lane typical section. Any questions on, on what was proposed? Went through that.
I know, we were, this has gotten brought up, I don't know, Jason, but we were talking about the roundabout on seventy-sixth. If you're gonna put one in, you almost have to put, you know, down the line, you need to put them in because putting a light, you know, roundabout and a light, well, there were some traffic studies about that, I recall that. Um, that's why I was wondering if you guys were considering, you know, a roundabout that, I think on sixty-fourth and Veterans and.
Yeah.
And the one it looks like it was, so.
Yeah, alternatives two and three add roundabouts at all those mile intersections.
What size of roundabout are you guys planning on that?
Uh, we looked at a hundred-and-eighty-foot inscribed circle.
So is that, is that similar to the ones that are in West, in, uh, what, South Fargo then, on Veterans already?
No, so the ones on Veterans north fifty-second are a hundred-and-fifty-foot inscribed circles.
Okay.
Um, and, and when we looked at that, it were, we didn't have it in this presentation, but really, we could improve those, really by, by revising the approaches in and out of those to intersect that inscribed circle more tangentially, instead of perpendicular. So a hundred-and-eighty-foot diameter would be similar to what's on Twenty-Fifth Street between fifty-second and Davis. Fuller hundred-and-eighty-foot diameter roundabout. So.
Yeah, cause those ones on Twenty-Fi- Fifth Street right now, those are tight turns, you know, you come in.
Cause.
On Veterans.
On Veterans, I mean, yeah.
Yes, so those ones, and that was a little study too, to look at those.
Yeah.
So we have an option to either revise the approaches or to reconstruct it to a hundred-and-eighty-foot.
And so my question, is, is it only planned then for like, smaller vehicle traffic, no, and no larger vehicles at all? I'm just trying to figure out, um, getting semis down those roads for, we'll just say, construction materials. Is that gonna be able to handle it?
Yeah, so if you look at, uh, N C H R P report six seventy-two, that's put out by, um, International Transportation Institute, I believe. But, uh, that has kind of approximate roundabout sizes for different vehicles, and a hundred-and-eighty-foot will accommodate, uh, W B sixty-seven, which is a, a full semi.
Yeah.
What we can move, you just have to make sure we run turning movements on those, and make sure we have a wide enough truck apron to accommodate that. For example, we just put a, a roundabout on Bismarck, um, it's gonna get constructed this year, and those were, I think, a hundred-and-fifty. And that can accommodate a truck. Got quite a big truck apron, but it, you can.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And I know there's been talk about, you know, some people don't like roundabouts and that kinda thing, but like, we witnessed here on seventy-sixth, we're moving traffic, you know, and I know as we get more people on the road here, that's gonna probably prove itself that we're able to move traffic, I'd say more efficiently than what we had a light there, especially with the school being where it is.
Well, I believe, I don't have this presentation, I have one you did previously, but, uh, I believe Dan will get into that on the public feedback on what.
Yeah.
On what's full, full of roundabouts.
Is it typically more expensive to see roundabouts versus lights?
Um, the roundabouts, I think the, the alternative one and two are very comparable. I mean, a traffic signal now costs about three-hundred thousand dollars. Um, roundabouts are a little more expensive, just can put landscaping and build, they're, they're, the stones, so it can be a little bit more complex, but, but generally on a project like this, it's not, it's not a huge cost.
I think you could also say the long-term cost for traffic signals, um, kinda adds up too, because we have to have the chap, engineers go out there every time the signal went to. Um, and, uh, just the, I mean, the, uh, signal poles and that, the, and things like that, so.
The, the concepts that are in the plan too, when it comes to actually making the decision, if implemented and designed, vetted out, of those, there's still time in the future to make changes to roundabouts, to get a little, modify it a little bit bigger or smaller. So this is overall concepts that keep under this, I think, cost.
Right. Again, I'm just kinda looking at the continuity and what we had talked about one other time. We know it's gonna be around about sixty-fourth and seventeen, and we know obviously there's one on seventy-sixth and seventeen. So if we go east, do we want that continuity to continue? You know, that's kinda what the question that we're talking about this.
And I think, you know, as we looked at the seventy-sixth Avenue Corps study, uh, there is also some concepts I've had roundabouts. Um, there doesn't necessarily have to be roundabouts going on seventy-sixth Avenue, knowing that that, that potential feature will change at I twenty-nine. So which will, you know, as you go further east, will pick up more and more traffic and make a roundabout where it's maybe not feasible because it overloads with much traffic, and it might be that, profitable. So, um, at some point on seventy-sixth Avenue, it may be well-suited to have a roundabout at Veterans, but then when you get over to break Fifth Street and, for a run, lights may be.
Well, um, we do have just a few more slides here, I think you got yours.
Yeah, I got through them, so I run through slide four.
See a map there, uh, there it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went to eleven.
Okay. Number twelve, so it'll be a little on here. And, uh, apologize, it'll be a little hard to see from there, hopefully on your screens, you're able to see a little better. Um, I guess if we could, I would do the whole screen, but I don't know if I'll mess anything up or not.
You take that.
You try. No trouble shooting, we're gonna be over there.
There we go, it's a little better, so hopefully you can see this good enough, but I'll go ahead and do some pointing like we did at the last meeting here. Um, so, I'm a bit over here. Um, so anyway, so here's Veterans Boulevard, oh, thank you, uh, down here, the proposed extension. And so that's fifty-second Avenue up top, hundredth Avenue down here, Wall, forty-eighth here. Um, and so here's the phasing plan that, uh, we came up with through, to the study, not just this quarter, but other quarters around there, because there's just so much planning that needs to be done, piecing puzzles together. And so what we found here is, one might think that it might, it'd make more sense to just start from the north end and march your way south, you know, maybe one year after another, but really, um, with the county doing the improvements to seventy-sixth Avenue here from twenty-one seventeen, and then up to forty-fifth, um, that has been graded last year, and then this year it will be paved, so then you'll have that connection. Um, now we're just working on the tying to the Fargo, and if that doesn't happen by the end of the year, there can be a, um, there's always, uh, is that thirty-eighth Street, I believe it is?
Correct.
That they can use as well. So, anyway, um, that's a great relief valve that residents from the city of Horace will be able to have to get, say if they're going to that northeast direction. And so that will be in by the end of the year, so, um, anyway, with that said, um, what we found to be the greatest need for Veterans Boulevard, looking at our analysis and our traffic models, was actually between, uh, sixty-fourth and eighty-eighth, and even actually down to a hundredth, because this is the minimum maintenance road, and something will have to be done to it at some point to get vehicles, as you have neighborhoods growing over here. And, um, so anyway, we're, um, recommending in this implementation plan that that be considered, um, from sixty-fourth Avenue down to a hundredth, by, um, before, before twenty-thirty, the year twenty-thirty, and, uh, not like it needs to be a full, um, urban-style roadway, but more just, uh, kind of like what county would be doing, an interim section, which would be a two-lane paved road. And so, we actually have a, um, a rendering of it on the, on the next slide, if we wanna jump over one slide and come back. So that would be kind of the rendering of what that would look like. Um, just very, very typical, just enough to kind of cause a, have a relief valve for, um, for folks going in and out of their connection. And we can go back to the previous slide there. Um, so then, um, also looking at, um, sixty-fourth Avenue. So as you probably noticed, there's an interchange, not an interchange, I should say an overpass, that's going in on sixty-fourth Avenue over I twenty-nine right now. Uh, that'll be also done by the end of the year. And then the program is to have, is programmed to have ramps there to and from the interstate in twenty-twenty-five. So, once that gets built, then, uh, there's another option for connectivity, uh, to the east and west. Now, at this point, there are no definite plans for a road from, uh, forty-fifth Street on sixty-fourth Avenue to County Road seventeen, but we are also, uh, recommending that that be considered before twenty-thirty, because once that interchange is in, there's gonna be a demand for vehicles to go east-west, and that will be another, uh, connection to provide connectivity, um, in this fast-growing area. And then looking at, um, County Road seventeen, and that's something that Jason could probably talk a little bit more about, um, that, about the improvements that are gonna occur there. Um, maybe I can, if you wouldn't mind, just talk about the improvements coming up.
I know, uh, with, uh, twenty, helps members, uh, Berklin and Trudeau, it's probably, I think this is the first time I've come out and spoken on, on, uh, you know, what we're doing the next, uh, three, four years in, in Horace. So, um, you know, in, uh, in the city, County Road seventeen and County Road six, uh, seventy-sixth Avenue, um, have been county roads. So we're, uh, we're extending seventy-sixth Avenue over to forty-fifth Street, and then, um, from forty-fifth Street, uh, going up to sixty-fourth. And, um, that's, this whole plan, um, that I, uh, gave you, really started about three, four years ago, in, you know, some past discussions on how we can get another paved access into, um, into Horace, especially as with the discussions with the new Horace High School and Middle School have, have happened. So, um, along with that, we know, based on the increased traffic that's from the, from the new development, we want to stay ahead on several other projects. So on the north end at, uh, fifty-second Avenue, the city of Fargo and West Fargo, uh, along with Cass County, we wanna complete the, the final phase of that four-lane. Um, so basically from the Deer Creek area, that inter- intersection going west to the roundabout. So we're gonna reconstruct that in twenty-twenty-three. And then at the same time, we're gonna reconstruct the bridge on fifty-second Avenue, so that it can go from a two-lane bridge to a, uh, at least a, a four-lane bridge. And then, the, the extra, um, added component to that is that below that bridge is a dam. And that's the dam for the water structure, so when you drive on that bridge and you see there's big posts that stick up, those are for hydraulic, they're hydraulic, uh, cylinders for moving that dam up and down. And then, on the southeast side of the bridge, is a big brick structure, and that's the lift station to pump water from the Cheyenne River over to, to the Red River for Fargo's water plant. So that's their backup, whenever, uh, they have low water on the red, they back that up with water from the Cheyenne. So that, that dam also has to get replaced, so twenty-twenty-three, um, the city of Fargo, West Fargo and Cass County are jointly gonna reconstruct, uh, that section of fifty-second Avenue, the bridge on fifty-second Avenue, the dam. And then we're also gonna reconstruct the, the roundabout, we're gonna add lane, additional lane similar to what's out on the seventy-sixth Avenue, um, roundabout, but it'll have those extra legs on each, each side. Um, so that'll, you know, take additional traffic, uh, in and out, uh, through that, through that, uh, roundabout. Then, um, uh, we're also gonna be replacing the bridge on the Cheyenne River, south of, of fifty-second Avenue on County Road seventeen. Right now that bridge is, um, it, it, it's kind of high in that, uh, it's called the camber when you, when you're going up and over it. So, you know, with the subdivision that's to the south, that's, uh, you know, it can be tricky sometimes with people trying to slow down to make a, a turn to head west to that. And, um, then of course, it's really limited in future expansion. And it, as traffic grows, it's only gonna make it more challenging. Um, so it's not gonna be easier to reconstruct that bridge two years from now than it is five, you know, five years from now is gonna be worse than two years from now and on, because we're just gonna have more and more traffic, so we wanna get that done sooner. So we're gonna put a box culvert similar to what's on sixty-fourth Avenue on the Cheyenne River, fortieth Avenue, uh, seventy-sixth Avenue, s- similar box culverts, but it'll be wider so that it can handle a, um, five-lane future road. It'll, and then, as well as bike paths on both sides. So, we're designing this so that when we turn it over to the city of Horace in the future, you shouldn't have to do anything as far as that, that box culvert bridge crossing. You know, if you wanna widen it and expand the road to a, you know, urban curb and gutter section, you know, fifteen years from now, you'll have the capacity without having to go add extra segments of box culvert on that. And then that same year, we're also going to be, uh, reconstructing the intersection of six, uh, sixty-fourth Avenue and County seventeen and put a roundabout there. Um, so it is gonna be one, uh, so the summer of twenty-twenty-three is gonna be a, a big headache. Um, people that live south of sixty-fourth Avenue will generally have to, uh, uh, now that we'll have that paved connection on seventy-sixth Avenue over to forty-fifth Street, will be able to take that route to get up to fifty-second Avenue. Um, or they can still take some alternate routes, um, you know, which are all gravel, as, as all of you know. Um, that's the, the one challenge, and that was why we really made an emphasis on getting this paved connection on seventy-sixth and forty-fifth Street done this year. Um, so that way there's an, us, you know, another alternative route for the residents of Horace to get in and out of town besides either heading south to a hundredth and taking County Road fourteen over to the interstate, or else having to go up through, uh, the fifty-second Avenue. Um, so, you know, the, those residents between the Cheyenne River Bridge and the sixty-fourth Avenue, they'll, they'll exit through Deer Creek and get up to fifty, fifty-second Avenue there. And then the residents between the bridge and fifty-second Avenue will have an alternative, you know, in-construction route for, for those residents that live along the road there. Um, so that's really the big year for, for change. And then after that, we will follow up in twenty-twenty-four, and then, you know, we've got concrete up here in front of the main part of the building, part of Horace, but the rest is all asphalt, we'll be, um, doing an asphalt overlay, and that will really, uh, you know, uh, for the most part, the vast majority of this will be three-lane with right turn lanes at all the major intersections as well, from fifty-second Avenue all the way down to, uh, you know, the south side of, of town here. So, uh, things should be well in position to turn. turn the road over, which for those that aren't familiar, right now, the North Dakota, North Dakota law allows that once cities reach a threshold of five thousand that they can become, they can then buy for the federal funding for their city projects. So that's kind of the threshold when, when we turn roads over to the city. Generally, we don't, we don't do that a lot because we don't have a lot of cities that go from zero, you know, below five thousand above it. This is, this will be the first since West Fargo, when we're five thousand, probably in the, in the seventies or whatever that was. But we do the same process whenever Fargo and West Fargo expand out and surround, say, County Road ten, which is twelfth Avenue North. We've done similar projects where we turn those, them over to the city. So with all this infrastructure, you know, we're, it's, there's a lot of money that Cass County is putting into this infrastructure over the next three, four years. And, you know, once that's done, we really look to have that kind of be the, the final infrastructure projects prior to sometime between now and twenty, you know, twenty-thirty that when we anticipate the city being over five thousand and then we'll, we already have an agreement and kind of the turnover process to hand that back to, to the city. So if there's any questions, I could take them. If not, I can turn it back to Dan here, so.
Any questions for Jason or even on this map? Not sure if there's, maybe I could point out a few more things and then we can open up to any other questions. Just also noting on County Road seventeen here, what we show with our analysis is that the section between sixty-fourth and seventy-six, between twenty-thirty and twenty-thirty-five is maybe when that may need to be reconstructed, not so much a pavement standpoint, but just because vehicle traffic. And so that would, that would entail, or posing as a four lane there. And, and then also from seventy-six to eighty-eight, that could wait maybe another five years or so, sometime after, sometime after twenty-thirty-five, that could be reconstructed to also become more trapping. So with that said, as you heard before, there is the plans for a future interchange of seventy-sixth Avenue. That's way out in the future, probably beyond twenty-thirty-five, but it's yet to be seen exactly when that might be. So I think that kind of covers the map, but I'd be happy to see any questions on, it's pretty complex. There's just so much growth down here.
When you guys were doing your analysis on this, did you have projections on the population and what we're looking at for, like say in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six type of thing, what type of population we were looking at that would be using, like say, back to seventeen?
We, we did. Well, what we did is we had population from today and then twenty-thirty-five and then twenty-forty-five. And so those were the three different scenarios that we, we used and then to see when, when these might be needed. And we did sit down with the city of Horace, with city of Fargo to kind of see, you know, where those, where those households and jobs are likely to be. And so we use that to generate how many vehicles there'd be and around the traffic model.
And that's why I was just wondering how you guys came up with the time throughs out there, so.
A few other things, you know, like Dan mentioned, you know, having this two-mile stretch from eighty-eighth up to sixty-fourth paved just with a kind of a rural two, two-lane section does, you know, provide that additional traffic to get the more traffic moving off of County Road seventeen. So, you know, that would provide that at a lower cost than having to go and build you know, more of a urban section. And then this section of sixty-fourth Avenue is, that's probably the, the one area where that'll be kind of challenging in the next few years because once this is paved and the overpass is there, you know, if you have a friend that wants to come visit and they look on Google Maps or something, it's probably going to take them all the way on sixty-fourth over, you know, if you live somewhere around sixty-fourth Avenue, it's not going to send you on the paved road down here over to County seventeen. And this is minimum maintenance road and then it gets you know, from the drain, it's an improved gravel road, but still not something that you want to have lots of traffic on. You know, and when we, when we do the roundabout, we will work with the city and see where that endpoint is and if maybe there's some collaboration, you know, with the potential for new elementary school and some other things going into there that maybe we could collaborate to extend our project you know, a little bit further east. But at some point, that collaboration between Horace and Fargo is going to have to happen. You know, and, and just from the perspective of Fargo, you know, not all of this has been annexed into the city. So that makes it a little more challenging for them because part of it is township, part of it's city street.
Township, you might know.
And so, yeah, so all of these challenges happen. So, but I, to me, I think that's one of the areas that with, as we talked about this area, it's just going to be challenging.
You talked about that. I mean, I'm just thinking of the nightmare back when we put in the roundabout on seventy-six in our detour. We put down some gravel on minimum maintenance road to make it work, but boy, that was a, you know, that was the issue. Granted, there was an awful lot of traffic that went on that road too, but yeah. So, yeah, I know what you're talking about. I see it coming, especially when they get the lanes on the interstate too, to be look, it's just another way to get off the interstate. It's good to add more traffic flow.
I think at least, you know, working with Fargo to get, you know, at a certain point and say, hey, let's get this gravelled and then, you know, the next point is probably more of a a narrower two-lane asphalt kind of rural type of section.
Even if we had it similar like where what you guys have it, the gravel right now before you're going to pave it to have that type of surface.
Right.
That would help, you know.
And, and to do something where, you know, what we did on seventy-sixth Avenue over to forty-fifth Street, not, we really built it so that way, you know, get that improved gravel road that people can be driving on, but it's designed that we can pave it. And so you could do that and leave it gravel for three, four years, but have it wide enough so that when it comes time to pave it, you're just paying for the pavement. You're not having to pay for a bunch of regrading on it and reconstruction. So that would help. And then, you know, the nice thing is if you, when you do it this way too, you kind of get through one or two years of freeze thaw over the winter and that. When you do pave it, you're not going to have as many cracks and, you know, deeds and stuff like that is when you, when you build a, take a, a minimum maintenance road and build it in one year and pave it, you know, whether it's some of those culverts crossings and some of those places, all of a sudden you get some dips on. You avoid that. So as, and you can stretch those costs out. That's one thing with, that we did on seventy-sixth and forty-fifth was stretch those costs over to construction seasons.
Right. And I agree. I mean, that's just a conversation for around town with Fargo, just timelines and what they're planning and what we could do.
And, yeah, that's, one, one last thing I'll add is that we do have a, a group that meets every of technical folks, engineers, planners, Horace, West Fargo, Cass County and ourselves and, and Fargo. To, we sit down every other month or so and we go over this area of the southwest and say, okay, what projects, what, what, you know, what kind of growth are you seeing? And so, so we, we have those meetings. And so it's really, really helpful to have those meetings to see, get everybody on the same page and, and sort of park.
We're going through this dynamic growth spurt right now too. I mean, who would have forecasted that four years ago? Projected to go. So, yeah, it's just good to stay on that.
And we want to do that because it's, it's amazing where someone doesn't realize, you know, something like, oh, there, there might be a new elementary school off of sixty-fourth Avenue. Well, that all of a sudden, when Fargo hears that, that makes a big difference and, and they may need to do some work on their side. So keeping everybody up to speed on what changes as far as infrastructure, new developments, new schools, parks and those things.
Every month or something.
Right. And, you know, and we're, we're tracking everything that's going on over by sixty-fourth Avenue and forty-fifth Street with got the Skills and Technology Center, you've got the new Fargo Parks facility. So, you know, again.
That's what I mean. I know that too, that that's going to become a corridor that we're, there's going to be a lot of traffic from seventeen over the interstate. That's just, so I understand. Yes, questions?
Questions?
Sir, issues?
I'm now busy. We're going to be on the County Road seventeen in twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something we're going to have to do though as far as like just public announcements and public engagement so people understand what's coming because that is going to be a major disruption.
Right.
You know, so it's going to be a little public, letting them know that this is coming when twenty-twenty-three, big heads up. So people can start planning alternate routes. So.
And that's, and, and when we looked at it, I know it gets to be a lot, but to do fifty-second Avenue one year and then open it up and then the next year through the bridge south of there.
You gotta do it this way. It just, it makes sense. I get it. It's just, we got to let people know.
So are any of those projects being worked on at the same time? So for example, the roundabout and the bridge, you do that at the same time, you have a certain number of houses there that are in between? That have literally nowhere to go?
So, yeah, between the bridge and the roundabout on sixty-fourth Avenue, we'll funnel then up them to Deer Creek and go through Deer Creek.
Out.
So they'll, you know, so if you're in the, the trailer park, you would just cross.
I meant north of that.
Oh, north, north of the bridge.
Bridge and south of the roundabout, you have, we'll just say twelve houses.
Right, yeah. So those people, for the most part, the, a lot of the road will stay, you know, as you get close to where the bridge is, that part of the road will get ripped out. We'll, we'll have to do some kind of temporary connections in with their driveways.
Okay.
And, and then.
That's why I was wanting.
Right. And then we'll have to do a temporary connection around the roundabout as that's getting worked on. So the nice thing is when you're building a temporary connection for twelve vehicles, you can build something that's going to be pretty decent quality. That's not going to fall apart like if you have a thousand vehicles a day on it. So, so, you know, I, I think we should build a, you know, we've done that in the, in the past in some other areas and you know, there'll, there'll be some points where it'll be a little more challenging, but generally I think we will be able to work decent access for them.
Some question, go ahead.
Sarah, did you have anything? And Sarah, I didn't mean to leave you guys in the weeds out there.
No, it's all right, Corey. I, I appreciate you asking. I need to digest this a little bit. I think I'm going to have a lot of questions. Specifically, I think we've gone into some pretty good detail regarding phasing and whatnot, but as our area grows, I am fearful that this may present some challenges in some very specific areas. I'm going to reserve those for the time being, but I would like to maybe revisit this over the course of the next couple of months as some things change because we have a lot of new development coming that could, that is, is not currently shown, but could very easily be impacted here. And I want to make sure we're taking that into consideration. My only commentary at this point.
Okay. But I just, I'll just reiterate what they were saying. They, we are engaging them almost on a monthly basis to try and keep them abreast of what the changes are that are currently going on in town. So it's, you know, we are keeping them up to date. Then we'll have to adjust accordingly. But yeah, understood.
Good. I, I appreciate that because this is a, a very large study. This is not something, I mean, they said they've been working on it since twenty-twenty and I, I believe that this, this is a, a really nice thing. I appreciate all the different alternatives, all the different options that have been brought to the table. But I, I know that even, you know, Fargo, West Fargo, especially with the new sports complex going over by the interstate and a man-made lake the whole future of this area is about to change. And so I'm, I'm excited for what's coming. I'm also a little on edge. I'm pleased to hear some of these conversations and I'm pleased to hear that some of this phasing has been taken into consideration. I had some of my own worries about that up to this point. So thank you, gentlemen, for spending some time and going through this with us.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Obviously we'll stay in contact.
And on the discussion on that, the, the new Fargo, you know, big retention pond too, that also provides a benefit, you know, in having a little cheaper dirt source for building the roundabout and putting, all of a sudden we got to put dirt over that box culvert for that bridge crossing. So, so there is some other cost savings to this collaboration. So it is, it's great that we work as well as we do with all the communities between Fargo, West Fargo and, you know, and Horace and the county along with having the, the expertise of MetroCard, so.
Sounds good. Thanks.
I'm not sure of what the wishes of the council is today with, you know, we have been seeking to have a, like, and get approval of the study or you know, receive and file kind of a thing. So I'm just not sure if the wishes of the, of the council are today with this presentation. So it's up to you all.
Yeah, you just want us to basically give a blessing to the presentation, what you guys are doing, that kind of what you're looking for.
So it, it can be done any different way. You know, want to be, just have a presentation, want to be, when we get to the final, we have a final report, we can send that to council and say, receive a file and acknowledging that we've gotten it.
Yeah.
Or if you're approving it. I think you probably want, knowing the council, you probably want a little bit kind of to digest it before saying, yeah, we can approve it or anything, but.
I just wanted to have a good conversation with Sarah about this prior, so that you're all going to stay in stage. She's not here today. Same thing with Chelsea.
Sure. But what I could do is put it under incentive.
Yeah. And I'm okay with that because we'll have those conversations prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. What does, what does approving this, like, what does that even mean? Like just saying, sure, go ahead and start building all these roads or what are, what are you, what are you asking for approval?
I hope just the study in general saying.
Like acknowledging that the growth is happening.
It's really acknowledgement of their findings. They, they went through, they did the study, knowledge, it's like, yes, they acknowledge that their findings and it's, it's like, like what you do with a conference plan. Kind of similar to similar question, the county commission, they did approve the plan last county commission. And it was by no way through your agreement, approval of the plan, are you saying that you're going to fund it or that it's going to happen the way it was done? This is, this is a planning process that, you know, really narrows down the different concepts for future design. So, you know, future designer would look at these concepts and further develop them. So you're not locking yourself into something, but you're saying that you, you agreed to the overall concepts and process that was used. You know, if you, if you think, no, this means this, this should have a concept for a six-lane from a hundredth all the way up and should have whatever, then, then this would be the time to, to bring those off before you approve it. But if it generally feel like it comfortably.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. So that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll discuss this between your next meeting, have another conversation.
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, the, the single lane with turn lanes that has taken into account the traffic flows, obviously, now and in the future, all the way up to these timelines as shown on this implementation recommendation, correct? So there would be no reason for us to say, well, we think that this should be a, you know, two lanes on each side. So a four lane total. This has all been vetted within this study. Is that my correct understanding?
Correct. The heads are nodding. So yes, that's been taken into account.
I, I want to make sure. And I want to ask, is forty-fifth Street going to mirror this with what Fargo's already planning? Because that road I run on, as, as it's gravel, and it looks to be fairly wide, what their plans are there. So I'm questioning, is this similar or different than what is currently planned on forty-fifth Street?
Yeah, it's similar. So forty-fifth Street is two twelve-foot driving lanes and then six shoulders. That's why they're so wide is to have that six-foot shoulder. So that way it's, it's safer for bicyclists or if someone has a flat tire and has to pull.
Okay. The other question that I have on veterans and, and I won't belabor this, but I do have to ask it. Further up on veterans, Ninth Street, there are raised medians. And I was told at one point that those were there for flood protection so that barricades could be filled in in the middle between them to constitute flood protection. Is anything like that needed as we extend that corridor down for flood protection or are we completely protected by? Or are we completely protected by the diversion nullifying the need for something like that?
In Horus, you're protected because of the high ground between, um, drain twenty seven and then going west towards the Cheyenne River. There's high ground that's already high enough to certify your Horus diversion, uh, Cheyenne diversion project. So you're protected, uh, for the city of West Fargo, because there was the potential as they remodeled the flood, uh, flood plain, um, about ten fifteen years ago, as they were going through the the re- remodeling of the FEMA hundred year flood plain, they realized that they needed to have that higher, um, median to prevent, cause if if all of Fargo's in, you know, uh, flood protection failed and there was, uh, that, you know, water just pouring through, it it would potentially cross veterans if it was at just the grade without those higher embankments in the median. And so that's why West Fargo had to build those to make sure they maintain their certification on their Che- Cheyenne diversion project for the, that part of, uh, West Fargo. So this would, um, and those, those higher medians only go down to, I think, just south of thirty second avenue, and then they disappeared as you get further.
Right.
Down toward Cheyenne's, uh, Cheyenne High School, so from there, solid that they're not needed and they wouldn't be needed as part of this project.
Excellent, okay, you've answered all of my questions, these are simple, um, I guess layman questions, but I I think that, uh, they're they're worth asking, just because we're going through a a fairly significant diversion project right now that, uh, carries a lot of, um, oh, there's a lot of people with mixed opinions on it. So I wanna make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is to ensure that we aren't inadvertently overlooking something, and that's absolutely excellent, thank you.
Okay, all right, uh, other than that, anything else, otherwise?
Sure.
I appreciate the, appreciate the presentation, guys, thank you. All right, Jim, we'll move on to nine. Lucas, can you still hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bye. We have the ninety is Deer Creek Estates second addition. It is a thirty one point six acre parcel, it's south of Deer Creek Parkway, west of County seventeen and north of sixty fourth avenue. Plan is, the plan proposed fifty three lots, uh, one commercial lot, fifty one residential lots, three HOA lot, green space lots and one home lot, so. In my math, that doesn't quite add up, but around there. So, um, plan or the plat has gone to board the planning and zoning commission, the office has addressed. Don't remember if there were any comments coming out of planning and zoning.
Pents.
Along sixty fourth avenue.
Pents along sixty fourth avenue. Privacy points.
That would be in a green space, a panel. An additional ten foot balcony, they have a one sixty fourth avenue, north side of the road.
That was our only comment.
And we did receive comment earlier this afternoon regarding some utility easements across lot three, block one. There's a plan for some twin homes on that lot. They had added to the original plat, approved by planning and zoning, two forty foot shared access and utility easements, um, basically at the third point and the two thirds point, I think it should be refused filed through the cabinet.
Yeah, okay, awesome.
The third, about the third way down and the two thirds of the way to access these, uh, twin homes. So, um, I think our options today are to approve the plat and then record the easements, so we know for sure that they're going to happen, there was some question as to if those easements would be as they're shown here. Pretty confident in them, but wasn't a hundred percent confident, we talked to the applicant this this afternoon as to the exact location of those. So, um, the other option would be able to go figure it out, or like I said, approve the plat, depending upon the, do it contingent upon the easement, or you could do it, approve the plat and then record the easements for the exact location of the term. The applicant this year, if you have any questions regarding lot three, block one, that's what I was able to get information on this afternoon.
Okay, let's just, we're gonna do the plat one first and I'll open up for public hearings, so get that part squared away. Um, so what is it with the easements, uh? With, yeah, go ahead.
I think it's John Lowery, have you did from there?
He did, I do.
I am, yep.
He's here.
He might be able to trial a little more.
Why don't you just go ahead and explain that a little bit for everybody, so that we're all all in the same understanding here?
Yeah, yeah, I I think it's, uh, you know, our area is part of a bigger drainage. And right now, the final details, um, I don't know, I don't know how many are familiar with the this drainage, but there's a field drain all about a quarter mile east of County seventeen, uh, that crosses underneath sixty fourth avenue right now. And so, and that that actually continues to the north across this property and then into Deer Creek. And, uh, you know, sometime in January, we be be, we continued to have some discussions with city of Fargo. Uh, their request was that we send our stormwater west and we proceeded in that manner. Um, but nothing has been confirmed with, uh, Southdale fourth edition, I believe it is, south of sixty fourth, that that stormwater is gonna end up in the County seventeen right away. And if it does not, if it discharges to where it did, uh, uh, discharges today.
Trying to get me back to the meeting.
Um, th- th- then that stormwater, we'll need to route that stormwater through our site. We believe we can do it and right away, that either in the sixty fourth avenue right away and whatnot, but some side yard insert, some different things may be needed. And and Jim, I don't know if that's making sense, the way I explained it, feel free to add on to that, but, uh, um, the way we have it presented, we're we're confident that it's gonna work out this way. And I agree with Jim that we we could always, um, dedicate separate easements if some o- other easements are needed for for any conveyance.
Jim, this is Sarah, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, I was under the impression, and I should say I I have an understanding, that the Southdale fourth drainage is not going in the County seventeen right away, am I misunderstanding something?
Sarah, I think we lost their audio.
Oh, shoot, we did, they're not hearing me.
Yeah, and and Sarah, I can, I I've had a few conversations with Interstate on that. I know some is going to, uh, drain twenty seven and some is going to, um, and that that's how we were instructed to proceed with our design, is assuming that. It's just, w- once that's finalized, I think we'll know for sure on this one, you know?
Got it, got it, okay. That's what I need to know, thank you, hopefully they're able to get us back here.
Corey and 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 Jim and others, I don't know if you're you're hearing us, but, uh, we cannot hear you.
Yeah, but I'm running on.
Corey, we heard you for a second there.
All right, we're all good again, can everybody hear?
Yep.
Yep, I can hear you.
There, better bring them, bring the speaker back up again, okay, I think we can hear you. John, you wanna try it again?
Yes, I I was just, uh, making a comment that I was under the impression, uh, and I have the understanding that Southdale fourth was not going to be draining, uh, in the ditch there in the right away on County seventeen. But, uh, Jonathan was able to give me some detail on that, Jonathan, maybe you wanna share it with the rest of the, uh, council here.
Yeah, and and Jim, you you know, you you Interstate's leading the design on that, I I'll I'll let you speak more to it. But in general, Corey, the the, the one point that's hanging out there, uh, but we're fairly confident in, um, is there's a field drain that comes underneath sixty fourth avenue, about two thirds of the way, uh, uh, through this site, uh, I'd say a quarter mile or so east of County seventeen. And then it drains into that west cul-de-sac of Deer Creek Estates in Fargo. And in general, that water is being rerouted to not cross under sixty fourth avenue. Um, but I don't think that that's a hundred percent finalized at this time.
Yeah.
It's not, we're meeting with the developer. Intent is to think at the big points.
That makes sense.
There is no report. The discharge is all good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so our plan that's presented here, Corey, assumes that, you know, what Jim just explained there occurs. Uh, I think there's a fairly good chance that that occurs, uh, it's just, um, you know, we're all playing in the same sandbox and timelines need to align a little bit as well, so.
Jim, why don't you go through the options again, a little bit, partial to one, but go through what we can do here.
So there is the original plat, as submitted to the county zoning. Going, basically, it's what you see at the. That's not, that's not the. If you go to the next. They were.
Inch forty.
So there is the plat that was shown to the planning commission, planning commission. You approve that plat and then lot three, block one, block seven. Block one, this is block one, right, yeah. Block one, the reason they got covered up by the. Uh, there are two, like I said, there's a two forty foot line shared access and utility easements about a third of the way down from Deer Creek Parkway, third of the way up into Deer Creek, Deer Creek and loop, or access to some twin homes, maybe it's a two on each side of the access easement, so there'd be eight of them.
Uh, eight structures.
Eight structures, eight structures on that, on that lot. So, to approve it with those easements, which is what was provided this afternoon, or we could, um, we could be contingent upon the actual location of those easements if they were to change. Don't necessarily know that they would, I don't necessarily know if they would. Or picking this up. Or they, yes, and the easements would be added, so it's recorded later, it's like, it's lot, three block one was like, easements could be added, recorded to this plat, to the plat.
So the clean, the clean way, the easements are gonna go on anyways, or you add on later? Can you add on with the, that plat, that's cleanest, but we really have that sooner, obviously, but.
Mm hmm.
Uh, could they be recorded on later?
Yes, we'll be there.
Yeah.
Where you could.
Right. Jeff or Naomi? Sarah, do you have a preference on this one?
I'm only getting tidbits of the information, um, I need to know, to to me, it makes sense to try to, um, record the easements, the actual easements, but I'm not hearing, uh, the other side of the story, it it's cutting in and out.
Yeah, well, Jim didn't use his outdoor voice, that was the problem.
Yeah, S- Sarah, we we, s- since we submitted this plat, we did a site plan for lot three, block one, on the west side of sixty eighth there, oh, it just went away, but, um, i- i- it's a townhome lot and and we did add some easements to that plat from when it was submitted sometime ago to, and reviewed by planning and zoning. So it it's just a small update, um, the the, separate from the the drainage piece that we were talking about, uh, there, so.
Got it, okay, thank you. Did we lose them again?
No.
No, we're still here, it's, they wanna get the pretty picture back up, you know? Go ahead, Russ.
He's cool, he's missing the reading.
I'm getting here. I was trying to bring the version that they have with those easements on.
It's not.
I know, it's iPhone.
We don't have it either.
So I I have a question unrelated.
Sure.
Um, traffic coming through here on that one road.
Yep.
Is that collecting everything from Deer Creek from Fargo as well, bringing it down to sixty four?
Well, I mean, I don't know, they have a lot of cut through there, I think probably if they're gonna get on to sixty four and then go on to where.
I was wondering about school kids coming down sixty eight there, is that the only way we're getting to sixty four, Russ?
Okay, Deer Creek Parkway is still gonna exist.
Okay.
That, right now, by the way, when you plan to put it?
Yeah, I'm planning to prove.
That will be our only connection from Deer Creek to sixty fourth avenue for twenty twenty three. Am I answering your question?
You're kinda getting to my point.
That's, that, uh, that will be our only connection from Deer Creek Parkway to sixty fourth avenue in twenty twenty three. And, uh, will only be useful for the people along there if we don't do sixty, if we don't do the next one on the agenda. Okay, but is that answering your question?
You're getting there.
Six also will connect Deer Creek Parkway, north of sixty four, there, right away there.
That's what I'm getting, I just wanna make sure it's not just that, that's.
Not get ahead of ourselves.
Okay.
Just saying, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, never mind.
Okay, Russ, did you have anything else you want, or any, you guys have seen this before us here, so I mean, you got any comments on this that you'd like to?
For reasons of connectivity, I'm in favor of getting the plat passed tonight. I'm not crazy about, uh, uh, new easements. But if there's a way they can take care of that later, I don't care. I would like to see the infrastructure on this happen as soon as possible.
No, I understand that.
For, don't, we're okay, we're we're fine with the plat.
Okay.
Planning and zoning.
That's what I, I assume that, otherwise we wouldn't even be having this conversation, so. All right, Jim, what's the cleanest way to do this then?
If the plat is presented and approved by the planning.
All right, I'm gonna, is anybody out here, being it's a public hearing, anybody else want any discussions, conversation about it?
How many houses are gonna be on lot three, block?
Actual residences is sixteen, eight buildings, sixteen units.
Level lot two.
Lot two's a lot. And lot's one, lot's commercial.
I just feel like it's a ton of houses again, we thought this on the plot to the north and we're cramming seventy five, eighty families in this little area, high density zoning. That was our biggest problem with the plot to the north was why can't we match what's in Deer Creek right now, in that area? And we're cramming in forty foot lots. I mean, it's way too many, as far as I'm concerned. It's it's no different than the fight we had last summer.
Who's who's speaking during the public comment area there, I I didn't hear.
Introduce yourself.
This is Matt Cassett, I live on sixty eight.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
We're just, our three houses up, four houses up.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, didn't we, what, didn't we lower it that first?
We changed the first one pretty substantially, um, uh, you know, like a long Ashwood, they're eighty foot wide lots, they're not as deep as. The Deer Creek ones. Along Deer Creek, uh, we, we changed it to one, two, three, four, five lots to match their one, two, three, four, five lots on the east.
I mean, my opinion of this pot is kind of a breeze. I mean, didn't we take how much, much time to go and try to work with the developer and work with the residents? About what concern?
And now there is a street between.
Yes.
The two developments. The. The, the dense homes, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to look at the, the north end of that plot there. And I don't, there we go. So is it the park there right there? The lots on the north end, there'd be larger lots, and then you, uh, the ones as you go east there, those are the smaller lots. I just want to make sure that. What houses go in there are not cookie cutter. I want some variety. Um, just so we don't have another repeat of whatever this is, a Southdale. And like I said, I realize there is a buffer right there. That, that parkway right there is that. Is that actually developed already right now?
Deer Creek Parkway is currently developed with an asphalt taken section. We're, we're proposing, actually didn't take that. Yeah, we're looking at Deer Creek Parkway to uh. Taken section, I believe. But I think if we don't do it now.
To answer your question, Naomi, that, that is what, you know, the, the first addition went in, um, there's a lot of. Give and take on both parts, I will say, um, to come to agreement. And then the second addition here, there is a road that is a buffer between the majority of. What was existing to the north and now what is being proposed for the south.
Well, not really, there's that whole roundabout Deer Creek, I mean, there's. I mean, you're backing up to all those lots over there, tiny lots. I mean, it, it, this plot's actually affecting more lots than the one to the north. A lot of traffic, and there's, that's a lot of traffic. Deer Creek, somebody, someone else is in there.
Russ was just, uh, address that you guys had your conversations, thinking about the size and the lots and the traffic patterns.
Size of lots are basically consistent with what we're doing in Southdale. The uh, uh, nobody came. For the public hearing at finding a zone.
The only obligation I got was the one for this meeting. That's why I'm here.
Fair enough. This is, this is John Laurie, I'd like to just, uh, uh, say something briefly, um. So, um. You know, as Jeff alluded to, on Deer Creek First Edition. There was some significant uh give and take and compromising that was being, being done, not only with Fargo residents. Um, uh, speaking up tonight, but, but the Horace residents uh that lived to the north. And uh, similarly, when Deer Creek Second was brought in, initially, it was a hundred percent. Uh, high de- hi- high density residential and the future land use. And uh, the city made some requests to put some commercial on the corner of Cass County Seventeen and Sixty-fourth. And to, to which, you know, uh, we were happy, uh, the developer, I should say, uh, owner. Was happy to work with the City of Horace on that, uh, consistent with things. And, you know, we've taken some time to um, work with the city and uh. So I, I hope you, you, you understand, we've been putting our best foot forward as we go through this process. And uh, you know, would appreciate your support tonight and um. You know, approving a plat that's consistent with the future land use plan that was even amended. Uh, as we went through the spotting process. Thank you. Yeah. Is there going to be, no, I don't. Map back up there again, but between where Horace is at, where you guys have that back area there. The higher density housing, is there gonna be, what are you guys using for type of buffer between the two? Is there anything gonna be there in the residential?
Yeah.
There's not a residential in red buffer, uh, New Deer Creek Second. First edition is a fence, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I was just wondering if there was some mechanism, just similar to what, what you, you talked about here with the group to the north. There was something along the line there. Sarah, do you have any comment on this one?
I see both sides. I, uh, I'm listening to the developer and uh, John's not wrong. They bent over backwards on the first Deer Creek, they've accommodated some things. Um, they're working on this. I, I like that we've got, you know, more than one way in, one way out. Um, I think there's been some thought put into this. Um, but I'm also hearing the resident that is speaking, um, because I'm one of those people that owns a larger lot. And I believe that there needs to be a, a buffer of some kind, um. When you back up small lots against bigger lots, and I've said this since day one. And I'm gonna continue to preach it because this is one of the biggest beefs that the residents in the City of Horace have. Is putting small lots right up against big lots, and I, I feel that pain. So, um, that's my commentary for the time being. I'm curious what the other council members have to say regarding that.
Well, I mean, my thing is too, we have gone through this exercise once before. So that would be about the only thing that I was thinking too, is that there's some type of a uh. More of a buffering between the, or lots that are up there on that north, well, call it northeast area. Sure.
Eventually to the eastern Deer Creek, there are smaller lots that, that are by that size limit. I mean, I think we're using, we're a little bit of a funny way, I think, I think certainly I think Sarah's lot or Ashwood lot, those are in this state lots. They're eight or plus, in some cases, three. Um, I don't think that, I don't think they are that way here in. That Deer Creek Fargo side, they aren't, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, I guess they're bordering here or something like that, if I'm correct?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're not over the large lots, but, but we're also not the high density, like, like what you're talking the other side of Deer Creek.
Right, I, I just don't feel like it's stand up for move. I don't, I don't know that, like, you know, am I just sliding it down? Can you see it more from this corner, please?
I have to undeepen it. Yeah.
Thank you. You know, it's what you said, there's more density over here, I don't know, like, this fence, like, helps that exactly. You know, th- this lot is the mirror image of this lot, this lot is the mirror image of this lot, certainly there's more density here.
Right.
Two for one here, but it's not like it's eight to one.
But I think the concern is, one I'll just point it out. Everybody can take a quick visual look at this thing. And what the concern is for sure, click right through here, you got the smaller lots, and I think this is, you know, here too, a little bit more. This, yeah, I mean, understand, but this is what I'm talking about, you already have these smaller lots against the newer ones. That's what the concern is, so. We can have a more of a discussion on that, but. I mean, I see what you did here too, you know, when you look at it, I get it, just. The perception is these are smaller, they do look smaller compared to what you got on here, you know, on here. Especially when you got the backdrop of this.
Do, if I could ask, do any of the Fargo lots there have, they've been seen right now?
I don't know. And as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I don't, I, I don't live there, so like, I don't, and even if I did live there, like, the buffering isn't. Necessarily the issue, it's just so dense, so many, there's sixty-seven. Houses that are gonna be there, it's just a lot of traffic, a lot of people, all my kids, I mean, it's just, they're so small.
Do you plan on having any kind of a fence or anything along sixty-fourth there?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But I mean, the other thing too, and I will say this, is that we have to understand too, that in Horace, what we're dealing with too, is we're not gonna be able to have. These larger lots like we've had in the past either, so I understand that. This is going to be, we're gonna have.
I think.
But some more of these are gonna be coming too, so we have to realize that.
I, I, I get it, but we've made no secret that. We want to work with developers and we're willing to work with developers, provided we're. Position where we're butting up small lots against big lots. I mean, there needs to be some level of understanding at some point. That this is unacceptable in this area, it, with this council, period. That we need to have a buffer, we need to have something that makes sense, you need to design your developments. So that we are not put in this position where we have to make these difficult decisions constantly. Dollar over a buck, stepping over a dollar to save a dime, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm getting very frustrated with that, and. I want to work with this developer because of a lot of people that we've been seeing, this developer has been willing to work with us. He's made some, some recommendations, he's made some concessions. But I'm tired of having to face the same scenario over and over and over again, and maybe it's something that can't be helped. But I think it's something that we really need to consider.
No, I, I understand that.
If I can for a second, yeah, uh, I, I'm, I'm not willing to reduce the density at this point, I don't want to go back through the process. I am willing, if it, if it can get approved at this meeting, to include a fence easement, just like we did to the south of sixty-fourth. In that L-shaped section there. Um, I, I don't think it should be on the east side, I don't know what's gonna happen on that.
Right.
Eventually, it would be silly to put that up right now, but.
It's more of that L-shaped area, I think.
If that'd be helpful, maybe.
I mean, if you're willing to do that, then like I said, I, I guess then. I don't have any more concerns at that point, because that's what I want, some type of a buffering. Here, kind of like we talked about, we need to end that conversation on your north part there as well, so.
And since this is one of the first commercial going up against residential, do we have any kind of buffer between that? And I, I have no clue, I'm just asking.
The buffer that we tried here was, was the pond in between.
Okay.
If that, I mean, it's, it's quite a distance between the residential and the commercial, and it's a lot of way between.
But it provides a space.
Uh, so right now, we don't have a design board, um, we'll have to do something there, but we don't have a design board, just that we need that area for detention.
Okay, Sarah, did you hear that, what he was gonna do?
I heard that there's gonna be a fence easement, and that, uh, that takes care of my concerns with the buffer. I, it doesn't have to be fancy or complicated, but I, I believe that there needs to be something.
Right. Yeah, it has to exist. Yeah, and like I said, I'm fine with that too, though. Jeff?
I'm fine with it, um, as long as, like I said, I, I really don't want cookie cutter homes, and I know, I understand that, that's just, as long as it's been said. I'm fine with that, uh, putting a fence in that little L shape right there, um.
So how about this then, if we, we'll prove the plat? As is with the addition of adding in that fence, the L-shaped area.
It'll be a, it'll be a ten foot easement, like the bottom one is there, but while I have it, we'll include a fence and a new district.
Okay.
And you're not willing to get rid of any downsized any of those, get rid of any of the lots?
One thing I wanted to add, because of that is also here, so you're aware, I was. Going through measuring all some of these properties, the first cul-de-sac of Deer Creek Parkway. First couple lots there, like the second one in on the right. That one is roughly forty-eight feet wide, street view wise. One of the smaller lots that you were discussing a little bit ago is forty-eight feet wide. And the one to the, the third one in of that cost there at four, there, you know, it's fifty-two feet wide. So they're very similar width. There's a little depth difference, but not much. So these lots are. Similar in width, which has been a conservative planning commission, uh, when they dealt with the flats. Even just recently, that with the developer here recently, and by commission's feedback was. Get, get the lot, lot with.
Right.
So these are com- you know, comparable a lot with the review by us from members cul-de-sac, so I just wanted to point that out, so you're aware. Are they a little shorter? Yes, they are.
Russ, don't get me wrong, I appreciate what you guys all went through, just we got this one more thing we had to look at, so.
That's why you're here.
All right, any other discussion on this, guys? Otherwise, uh, any other public comment on this?
I just want to say I understand your concerns as a resident, um, and. I, I don't, I don't really see any, any ways of appeasing, like, appeasing. The developer, um, I agree with Sarah that, you know. I would like to make sure that we're not constantly dealing with buffering and. I don't want to have cookie cutter houses as well, I don't like the way seventeen looks right now, with those houses. Um, so I'm hoping that we can work on that too.
So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, Lucas, if you heard that, um.
Sure did.
Okay, have you guys got anything else? Otherwise, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, um, look to, uh. Have a motion to approve the plat, as is the addition of the fence, the L portion that we discussed.
And along sixty-fourth, right?
That's right. It's just the one that we're, we're making the addition to.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the plat for Deer Creek Estates Second Edition. Uh, provided the changes for the L shape at the northeast corner.
Okay.
Uh, to allow fence easement.
All right, Jeff, make some motion, can I get a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, I'll roll call this one, just so everybody's on, on pa- page here, so Naomi? Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes on the plat. Let's go to the rezone, is there anything on there, it's any different, Jim, that we need to, I mean, I think this is just probably a. Motion that we gotta do, if there's something different we need to talk about.
No, the staff report suggests the motion is, we've got the binding recommendation, the staff report recommend approval of the zone rebuilding application. So the vision was no addition of easements from Deer Creek Estates Second Edition.
Russ, anything on that?
No.
Dotting, dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
The biggest thing is we got the commercial on the corner.
Yep.
We weren't gonna have that before.
So I'll open it up for public hearing on the rezone, if anybody's got anything they want to comment on, on that. Guys, have any questions on the rezone?
Um, choosing that to commercial, um, where is that lift station going to go, Jim?
In the where that little piece comes up, that part of the little. Deer Creek Parkway, where it turns.
Got it, got it. Uh, does that have any impact, changing this to commercial now? Okay.
Sarah, you got any questions on the rezone?
I don't have any questions on the rezoned, I just don't want to see water in the ditch.
Fair enough. Any comments elsewise? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the rezone. Uh, again, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the rezone.
I'll make that motion to accept the rezone for, what is it, lot one block? Is it just for the commercial that I'm making the rezone for? Or is the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay.
The whole.
Okay, I'll make a motion to rezon, uh, rezone the entire Deer Creek second, uh, addition.
Okay, Jeff made a motion for the rezone, can I get a second? Naomi does a second. All right, I'll just do the same thing again, we'll roll call it. Naomi? Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yep.
All right, and the motion carries. All right, let's move on to number ten.
That's, yeah, that won't be.
Thank you.
On the powerpoint here, I think we figured, hopefully it'll work. Um, next item here is regards to planning designs versus consultant selection committee, uh, for city hall. As you're, right, as you may recall, uh, we've prepared that memo of the different steps that we'll have to do, regards to the construction manager and risk approach, uh, this is the first step, identify the selection committee, then that, we have four members, one would be administrative for city, uh, eng, licensed engineer, or a registered engineer, a registered architect, and a licensed contractor, so you have four different interests on that selection committee, that is identified as memo sent through. For the administrative side, I propose myself on that one, for the engineer, for the same engineer, so we're developing, uh, for the architect, try to find somebody local, that would be, Chelsea's sister, or Chelsea, her sister would be willing to do this, uh, because Stokes is a licensed architect, we could have that, and it's also a little and then for a contractor, recommend Cory Wickham, Cory, uh, was, was a resident for the horse for many years, for ample years, uh, but the thing with Cory too is he has a lot of expertise and knowledge as a contractor, he's very familiar with building, apartment buildings and hotels and different things like that, large construction projects, so this is right up his port, he's familiar with that. Um, also, anybody that is on the selection committee, or city, they can't go bid for the work, so I also had to check with them, say, okay, there's no conflict, they wouldn't be interested in pursuing works, like Cory, Cory Wickham, so, um, that is the group I'm recommending, council, uh, but this group, what they'd be responsible for is proposing their, developing the requests or proposals, or requests for qualifications, are up to, we'll go through that, they'll go through that process, and then, once they have that draft together, bring that to city council, also takes action on it, take out the requests or proposals, they do the selection consultant, or the consultant selection process, they go through that, and then they bring back the council to say yes or no, so they do all the footwork for the state council when it comes to doing the screening process and having that, uh, brought to council as recognition, what consultant. Questions, I can say, answer them.
No, this is just part of this process to get, well, I'm glad we found four people to be able to help us all, so we can.
Did these four people agree to it yet? Okay, you might want, Jim, is it okay? All right.
They've all been, they've all had discussions. They made a motion to accept the election committee in second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Okay, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll bring that, start working with that group, get that together. Topped it.
Jim, you got eleven?
Eleven is engineering services agreement, water sewer storm, street improvement district, way two down five, it's our standard agreement, seven, city forest, summary of the cost, this is for the construction of residential lots along Concord Drive and seventy-third, seventy-fourth, streets south in the Baker Lake, a state addition, uh, B's summary is engineering board does not exceed, uh, five thousand dollars, design services, it's four point one percent of destruction, that is a reduction based on a rate table due to the fact that a lot of the overdone with addition, matter of preparing the plans and specific agents, three nine thousand, right away, it's not in here as a place, well, we don't, but we have an only, that one, construction services, that's a plate, construction office, I said, go on to it. Better languages, we have four, practice, based on our design percentage, I guess that's a, not as part of the state, it's just a, a bit of.
Yeah. We want standard operating procedure, Melissa, we've got some questions on it. Part of the motions you have to go through.
Yep.
So I'll look for a motion to accept the engineering services agreement?
I'll make a motion to accept
I'll make that, okay.
Sarah wants to do it, go ahead.
Sarah, I got you.
Oh, you go ahead.
Sarah, you're down for making the motion. Jeff?
Second.
Jeff does a second? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm curious, all right. Lucas, you finally get to be part of the show.
Right, been a long time, just sitting here listening, um, Mr. Mayor, do you want to do all these just together?
I think so, because otherwise, you're gonna be here till midnight.
Yep, so for this, um, this is, these declarations of official intent are required by the IRS, um, that the city executes these, uh, with any of these projects, the city has expenses, obviously, before, um, it bonds for these projects, so what this declaration, uh, states is that the city will reimburse itself, uh, once it receives those bond funds, uh, and then it sets an amount that, uh, the city will not exceed, uh, in those declarations, um, of official intent, so, uh, these were all provided to the city, uh, last week, so I will just go over the dollar amounts in each one, and then discuss, um, a revision that we had to make, uh, from one of them that, uh, council member Trudeau caught, so water improvement district twenty twenty dash six, um, maximum principal amount of the bonds, uh, to be issued, uh, five point two one million dollars, water improvement district twenty twenty dash seven, one point nine one two million dollars, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty one dash one, seven point five million.
Correction on that one, the request of the city council, I went through these, and that one should be eight point four six nine.
You catch that, Lucas?
I'm writing it down now.
Okay.
Hold on, Jeff, look at that one.
Okay. I'm not mad yet, I'm letting, giving you a chance.
How much, Jim?
On this one?
For twenty twenty one dash one?
Should be eight point four six nine.
So that, that amount that you're providing is what, the engineer's estimate?
That is based on the bid received, plus the fees, and, um, the administrative legal headwind piece, that's all that number here.
Okay, so what I'll do, we'll, we'll pull that one, Mr. Mayor, so that I can get the number, um, that we need to change it to, because we don't use just the number that Jim is providing, uh, so I'll bring that one back to your next meeting.
You don't trust Jim?
I don't trust myself to do the math.
Fair enough, all right.
So, so I'll, we'll pull that, we'll pull twenty twenty one dash one, um, from this list, so twenty twenty one dash two, two point five five three, uh, tw, uh, water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty one dash three, nine point eight three five.
That one, oh, that one too, Lucas, it's actually less, it's given lower than I expected on that one.
Okay.
Lower is better, I'm going with that.
What, from nine point eight to seven point five, so.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And so these, these declarations are supposed to be done earlier on in this project, when Jim has the estimated amount, um, and so now he's getting bids, so it's, it's obviously changing what these, these numbers are, so we could still approve these for what, what they were originally, um, but it's fine if we revise them and have more accurate numbers based on these bids.
Yeah, and that's fine.
We'll pull up twenty twenty one dash three, uh, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty one dash five, one point four eight nine million, um, this next one, the number that you guys got was seventy-two thousand five hundred, uh, council member Trudeau brought up that, that's not accurate, uh, so Jim and I did some discussing, and the reason is, is because that project got split up into two bids, uh, and so our office only had the one, because I was driving back from a Packers game and was not at a city council meeting, so I missed the other, uh, bid that you guys did, so that one will actually be, uh, in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand for that project. Water sewer and street improvement district number twenty twenty two dash one, four point three two four, storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty two dash three, two point four one three, sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty two dash four, six point seven. So, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking for is just, we'll do one, um, motion to approve all of those declarations of official intent, minus, um, water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty one dash one, and water sewer, uh, water storm sewer and street improvement district number twenty twenty one dash three.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just pull, take those out, so C and E are out of this one. Okay?
And you did make the update to the other one, uh, was it G?
Yes, that, I read out, it's eight hundred fifty-five thousand instead of seventy-two.
Okay, I just didn't see the updated document online, that's all.
I got it today.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions on this, or the purposes?
Thank you, Jim.
Sarah, any, any questions on this one?
No, no questions. I'd like to see it on my screen, whoever's running that.
I don't have
Thank you.
Then that's why I read them all out, councilman provide, because I figured you weren't seeing them.
Nope, you're right, and I wrote them down, I just want to make sure that what I wrote down, oh, it doesn't even have the amounts on there, it's just the general, okay, all right.
You were all writing.
Well, and those, I, I sent those all to the city last week, so the city should have them.
Okay. Yeah, it's okay, it's, we got the numbers here, so.
Sorry, I was reading.
There they are.
Okay, anybody, any other, otherwise I'm gonna look for a motion to accept this, minus, uh, C and E on here.
I'll make that motion. Motion to accept the declaration of official intent, uh, minus items C and E, from Gen nine twelve.
Yeah, gotta get a second on that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Sarah does a second, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm curious. Thirteen, Jim, you got that one?
Water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty two dash eight, sixty-sixth street, two after them, two was the, uh, preliminary engineering board for that project, how important's on that one was more the cost, uh, cost didn't change what we got from the
Jim should be couple of
So we had discussed with the last one, um, eight point six million, million dollars, um, as we talked last time, the mode would be a two lane with a center turn lane in the middle, no medians, it'd be two twelve-foot driving lanes, and they, they, um, well, twelve-foot center turn lane, uh, one section that was added since last time is phasing, um, I do apologize, I should not be having, just to you sooner, but I just figured this might be easier to, to show, it's described in the report by words, but pictures are all handy.
Pictures are free.
Even though I can't read, actually.
But you can find colors, can't you?
Just kidding.
So, sixty-sixth avenue corridor, there's gonna be a lot work going on there, the next slide, you did, as you all heard from county engineers, who days and that, some that, they've got work planned in there, we've got Deer Creek Estates first and second addition slides in there, talking about connectivity between Deer Creek Parkway and, uh, in the school and all kinds of other stuff, so what we have in the report is a kind of a phasing, so we've got sixty-sixth street with sixty-seventy-sixth avenue, all the way up into Deer Creek, and what the first the, the recommendation would be to do the entire project in phases, so we would do all the way from six seventy-six to Deer Creek, the entire corridor established, there's a school that's going in along this corridor at some point, we have a meeting scheduled for a week from today with the, with the, uh, school, just to get an idea, see if they know anything more, give them a heads up on this project, get their input as well, so the first phase of the project would be sixty-sixth street from seventy-sixth avenue, to basically the Christian symbol of our intersection, that's where we had talked about a roundabout in the past, we aren't proposing constructing that roundabout until development would happen to the east of what's now the south built parts, or the outland addition, we just have a temporary connection through there, that would be eventually proved into a roundabout, the second phase of the project would be basically from first to the Boulevard North, the seventh, to sixty-fourth avenue, and that will be constructed not in this year, but next year, so we have, first phase would be twenty twenty-two, second phase would be twenty twenty-three, which leads to sixty-fourth, that we, if we discussed in the last meeting, you pave a road to the railroad, and just make compounds the problem, so, um, in twenty twenty-three, the circle on seventeen is the roundabout, they'll have to construct about four hundred and fifty feet east of the roundabout, as part of their splitter island and all that, and we do have a meeting with the county tomorrow morning, talked about some of this stuff too, so just letting you know, but, um, there's the green dash line on the phasing diagram, and that would be sixty-fourth avenue constructed to an urban section, um, in twenty twenty-three by the city of Horace. We did hear from county engineers that they're making potential to lump that in with the roundabout project, and get some of that constructed at the same time as the roundabout, so that's something we're gonna talk about tomorrow, and that's what we
So I hope you that it appears.
Similar to seventy-sixth avenue, so that would be constructed to the west, the east limits of Deer Creek Estates second addition, from Deer Creek Estates second addition, over to sixty-six would be an interim section, it's similar to what the sixty-fourth avenue corridor study identified earlier in the meeting, that's where we got that from, was through that corridor study, so that would be prepared, just paved two lanes with wider shoulders for the future, that would take us to sixty-sixth avenue, sixty-sixth avenue north, the urban section, from Deer Creek Parkway down into, down to sixty-fourth, in twenty twenty-two, hopefully, maybe twenty twenty-three, the reason that I put twenty twenty-two on the phasing is, it can be done then, it frees up another way through twenty twenty-three for roundabout construction.
Right.
Had a lot of discussion about how to get the residents along sixty-fourth, Deer Creek, north and south, that would complete that, that gap. So there is a section in the report on, on the, uh, on the proposed phasing, so, um, the next step would be, provided we want to approve the report, would be the resolution of necessity, what that does is that opens up the protest period, this isn't a predominantly water sewer project, this is probably a street one, so this has to go through the protest period for, um, the effective residents. So the first thing we have on the, uh, agenda is approving the engineering So the first thing we have on the, uh, agenda is approving the engineering preliminary engineering report. Uh, one thing to notice is they're gonna put preliminary breakout specials in here, I wanted to break this one out based on the proposed special assessment policy. I haven't got a copy of that yet, so we won't, we're gonna get that, and we're gonna rework, rework it based on that policy. I didn't want to put numbers out there that were gonna be potentially questionable, so we'll amend this report when I get that put into it, but we need to keep the process, process moving, so.
Okay. Yeah, we can do these one at a time, um, Sarah, you got any questions on any of that stuff?
I do, um, before we get too crazy, I'm looking at the phasing and I want to ask Jim, if phase one as proposed is in twenty twenty two, would phase two be, uh, a gravel road, or would there be some means put into phase two if that is not paved in twenty twenty two, or would we only open up phase one in twenty twenty two, leave the rest raw and natural and then do something in twenty twenty three there, I'm just, I'm just getting the specifics of whether or not there's going to be people traveling on that road in the next two years.
So the way that it looks right now is twenty twenty, the two phases would be bid together, we would bid them all together, but as far as construction wise, do that mile of roadway, I think would be rather ambitious at this point, to get all that done, so we would focus on the phase one getting up to Christian Boulevard and then have the contract written so that if there can be work done north of there, it could be, but we wouldn't require the pavement to be done. And the question then gets to be, do you allow traffic on the aggregate base and contamination of that, and then you've got potential, um, I guess material is unsuitable if you do allow people to drive on it, so.
Right.
It's something that I think the plan right now, given where we're at, would be to just get the Christian Boulevard solid done, open, and then leave the second phase for next year.
So, executive, okay, so if we're gonna do that, Jim, you know, and they're, if they start working on the roundabout, it's about the same time that will be traffic around. Especially if we've got, especially if they're gonna be constructing on the phase two part.
So that's where the north of sixty fourth into Deer Creek Parkway becomes important for twenty twenty two. And it's getting that people on sixty fourth that way, probably not, it's not having to reply, it's quite honestly, they're inconvenient to go south.
Yeah.
You'd have, I mean.
No reason.
Almost have to go.
Yeah.
Fourth into Deer Creek and then back around and follow the decors, but I think it's ambitious if you did that one mile of roadway done.
Okay.
This year, but I will, no more to line up the meeting in the house.
Yeah, it's just something that, you know, when we look at this, we do have to be cognizant of what the county's gonna be doing and
Yes.
We try and make sure that we've got access points.
Yep, and that's why I put, put the years on here, just, just so that everybody was aware of what's gonna be happening in that area and feel that.
I have a question, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a Sarah, so I don't have a lot of construction background, but do we ha- do we have to do concrete, I mean?
Sixty third is considered a longer collector, that's, that's a lot of traffic. Christian Boulevard is concrete, and this would be basically continuation of that. Right now, the price of that is very high, patrolling base. And we do have better length span on the carcass, you save seven, six, six, three, all around the schools, concrete.
I know, but I just, I get what you're saying, like, there's a reason why some hills are concrete versus you say asphalt. But at this one edge, it's an absolute necessity that we have this such a concrete relative and I know you're talking about cost of versus asphalt, you're saying that it's starting to go up in price.
A road of this magnitude of the, should be concrete. The ability of all that, we're stopping. It's, um, the collector, it's not just.
Because of the amount of traffic that we're seeing.
It's the longevity of the road too.
I know, but you can always, roads aren't meant to last forever, I mean, you have to do maintenance on them eventually, so.
But you can get through, you have twice the long in your maintenance cycle, concrete, and you can live, yes. Your other ship's doing in seven years, concrete.
I know, but what I'm saying is, it, I know you have the maintenance on the road, but at that point, uh, like, I'm looking at the co- the overall cost of everything, so, I mean, somebody's gotta pay for this. So, what in, in my mind, everything, wouldn't it make sense to be a little bit cheaper, and then when we need to do the improvements, do the improvements, I mean, I don't know, I'm thinking out loud, I don't know.
So are you thinking like a temporary section that would be rebuilt, or are you thinking?
Well, eventually you're gonna have to do maintenance on the roads, you can't just build a road and not maintain it.
Right.
So what's the difference between, like, if we do, if we do concrete and we're like, yep, we're gonna get this really strong road and we're not gonna have to do any maintenance on it for X amount of time versus like going asphalt and then maybe it being a little bit cheaper, knowing that eventually, just like all roads, you still have to effort, you know, do the maintenance for them, I mean, maybe I'm not making.
Can I, can I help jump in here, um?
Yeah.
I, I, Naomi, you bring up a really good point, because cost is a, a huge concern, um, to me and, and my neighbors, obviously, on top of all the people that are going to be building in this area. Um, and I will tell you that, that a- a- as, at the forefront as it is, I, I'm going back and forth in my mind, because you bring a very valid point, but I'm also looking at this going, how many buses are gonna be traveling on this road with a new elementary school to the north and a new middle school and a high school to the south, and then I'm also looking at the new development, um, you look at this map and it's a wonderful, wonderful portrayal of the entire Southdale Farms and some of the Deer Creek development, not to mention the plat directly to the east of the Addelman Edition, um, which is unplatted at this point in time, um, but we all know something down the road will come there, um, it could be next year, it could be five years, it could be ten years, who knows? Um, we've got a lot of things to consider here, and with the amount of construction, the amount of heavy concrete trucks, the amount of buses, I'm very concerned that we would end up putting more money into this road in the long term if we chose asphalt at the forefront instead of concrete, and and Jim, maybe you can help expound on that, because that is one of my concerns too. Are, are we, you know, like I said earlier, are we stepping over a dollar to save a dime if we end up doing asphalt here? And then in two to three years, if it lasts even that long, uh, are we overlaying that, milling it, replacing it, you know? I, I mean, I'm, I'm fearful that the cost could really get out of hand, but at the same token, concrete's a chunk to swallow, so maybe you can help provide some, some facts on longevity, Jim.
So, say you've got a mile of road and you have to, in seven years, you have to chip seal it, and that's a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then in fifteen years, you would have to go back and either chip it again in a couple hundred thousand dollars. Then in the next year, you finally get to a point where you have deteriorated enough where you have to build it openly, and that's maybe four hundred thousand dollars. In that four, five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar range, you might not have been getting any concrete. You might, you would have just been able to go with it, you get through, I've done many jobs where bid both, did it as concrete, did it as asphalt, and asphalt. And more, more often than not, the concrete, once you look at a maintenance cycle, go to it, it more cost effective at the time. Maybe even more upfront cost, but over the long run, it actually saves you money, plus you get a little better, a little better, a little, a little, there is some questionable soils up there on the ridge, there's a lot of rust nodes. There's a lot of sandy, sandy play up there that does not have very good structural strength, so, um, we do have a very robust section because of that, plus we anticipate this being, if it's gonna connect the elementary school with the middle school to the high school, the athletic communities up in Deer Creek, and there's a elementary school, so we are gonna see quite a bit of bus traffic, and we are gonna see more we need a road north and south, that's one of the things that Morris has been longing for in five years, is another north south road, not one hundred and seventeen, that is the same thing we talked about earlier tonight with, with, uh, seventy six, or step, the roundabout, where's the Deer Creek, yeah. It's not, and the old, and there's, this provides us with that, or so, or so, and I think that people will start realizing.
I think another thing, if I remember correctly, when we were talking about this, just before, when they started talking about putting in all this development around here, Christian Boulevard two, would be, we wanted to make that road concrete because of the bus traffic and the amount of traffic that was gonna be going to that elementary school and between schools, so that's why we did that first part, requiring that to be us on that road, to be able to handle that, so we didn't have to deal with any maintenance prematurely because of what was gonna be happening there.
And seventy sixth avenue right now is going to be asphalt west, or east of where we left off, over to forty fifth and up, but that will be replaced as, it has the six, forty fifth to you some, so I don't have any problem getting it both ways. It's just a matter of adding.
I just feel like, I, I have to ask.
And it gives you the option. We've done, did the Christian Boulevard.
Jeff, do you have any thoughts on?
I can see it, bid both ways. If, if it's not that much work, just let's see what the cost is right now. Um, I, my comment on all of this would have been, we have yet to talk to the school, obviously, I saw the emails, you know, back and forth today, on when you're gonna meet, that's fine, um. What if they put the brakes on a new grade school for a little while? Are we, you know, getting the cart in front of the horse here? So, uh, obviously, phase one, okay, that's fine, um, I just wanna make sure that we're not overextending too soon where we may not need it.
So right now, you aren't going forward with climate specs, you aren't doing any of that, you're just moving the concept and you're moving, starting the petition process.
Okay.
Petition period is like, at least on the first occasion.
Right.
So in order, if we push, delay this, or table it or whatever, for another two weeks, let's just back three weeks, four weeks, our chances of getting it done this year, to win the lottery.
No, we're not.
Seriously, if we ask for just to see the cost of asphalt, I agree.
So, we, I can work that up, that's not a problem. We can bid it that way too, as the asphalt, but what I do is estimates, and then when we bid it, we can bid it as concrete or earth. Bid it concrete, asphalt, or vice versa, however we want to do it. That really doesn't take, I don't think you need to s- see that again. I can amend the report to show I'm gonna amend it to the special assistance, I'll add the H B P, the, to just pay the into, into the report, you can bring that back, but I think we need to start the petition for, for the resolution of necessity. Just to keep things moving.
No, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to get this part done, and then we'll get on to this other stuff.
The next step would be then.
I don't need to make a lot of work for you, I just, I mean, I, I'm just Naomi, I don't do construction, so, I mean.
Okay, so let's, let's move with the A and B then.
I'll make a, uh,
we'll do them together.
You want them together?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the preliminary engineering report and the resolution of necessity for twenty twenty two dash eight. Water storm, or water sewer, storm and street.
Alright, okay, um, can I get a second on that?
Yeah.
Naomi will do the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not sure if you heard me, yep, I'm there, aye.
Got it, thank you, alright, Jim, you got fourteen.
Alright, the next one is water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty three dash nine, this is sixty third street, eighty eighth avenue to eighty sixth avenue. Same thing here, construction of the residential collector's street. Conflim identifies the residential streets of residential collectors as free to connect neighborhoods and link residents to support facilities, the library, schools, parks. Streets are important links to that with the people using all modes of travel, by healthy paths along these corridors. Single family home to apartment building as well as community facilities. Um, these, these streets carry a moderate level of vehicle, particular traffic. Residential collector's streets should also support media uses and character. These streets show function to funnel traffic as defined access points on the interior system, they're not usually attenuated by the traffic signal or any ease of access, so that being said, it's a, uh, two travel lanes with on-street parking, access, unsignalized access every three to four hundred feet, so uh, this area is a continuation of sixty third street, which is along the east side of the, of the middle school and high school. Right now, that is a three-lane section, no parking, it's just before the conflim is done, we have a lane in each direction with center turn lane up to and through the eighty second avenue intersection. This project would be a continuation of that, through all that corridor, from eighty second to eighty eight. As you're aware, the Lakeview Edition is currently under construction through the west. We have seen preliminary concepts for the Cup Creek Second Edition on the east. Access to the Cup Creek Edition would be granted off of this corridor, so. Preliminary investment cost is a little bit under five million dollars. This is more than what, uh, we had for sixty third, if you go back and look, because there is water and sewer along this corridor. Didn't have the first phase, because Cup Creek First Edition had a lift station, the lift station was sort of shut, it was up, so we have the Lakeview Edition, so. The roadway section is similar to what we just talked about. Either way, if there's all two, one lane each direction, the center turn lane, or we have parking, it pretty much stays the same way. Doesn't change a little bit for the road, so, um, based on our last conversation, I'm assuming we'll do this, we'll then just add the asphalt to it. I'll get the, I'll be preemptive.
Bye.
Agnes?
Okay, so, the other question.
Jim, can you explain a little bit on, uh, why we have a curvature in that road so that everybody understands why that road doesn't just follow the section line and go straight down?
The developers on the east and west side of the section line got together. They decided they liked the curvilinear alignment. And that's what they were willing to dedicate to the city for public improvements, and that's what we are working with.
And they didn't want a straight road, is what you're saying? Got it.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm just curious, um, and I don't mean to belabor this, but I'm going to. Why do they want a curvy road?
So the thought process behind a straight road is, and I'm doing my best to channel my developer and what I've heard from them, all of that. It's, uh, turns into a super highway, you've got a sea of concrete that just goes in a straight line, you turn the corner, you can see the end. And it, uh, begins, gets a little bit of, uh, speed. Whereas if you have some curvature to it, you can get lost in the moment and not see the end and just enjoy the, enjoy the, um, travel through it.
Okay, Adam, what do you feel about the, is it?
Jim's spending too much time with developers.
Well, I can, I can channel.
I mean, I went in the pile that one time and you were talking about how difficult it can be with, you know, um.
Winding roads.
Windy roads and different kinds of, what are those called, um?
Pedias.
Those and houses that are in a cul-de-sac.
It does make a difference for what we do, um, in newer developments like this, it's less of an issue when there's, uh, street lights. Um, we go with pretty standard for most part, distance from the streetlights that are, so we know, okay, the road's three K off the street light.
Alright.
It makes it a lot easier to handle, by the way. Is it ideal? No, it costs a lot more to maintain, just a little bit of pain.
I realize.
It's not, it's nothing that can be changed anyway, sorry.
I know, I'm just wondering, what, I'm just wondering, like, what's that?
I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, because the entire section north of that is completely straight around the school, and it's really easy to see buses coming, and it's really easy to see traffic coming, and we start throwing a bunch of curvy roads in there, and all of a sudden you come around the corner and you don't know what's coming at you, and, um, this year has been extremely difficult with. And, um, this year has been extremely difficult with weather as far as being able to see, um, especially around snowbanks and things of that nature. And, um, I, you know, obviously, we don't want to put a stop to certain things, but I want some thought put into that because this particular developer is really getting into a lot of curvy stuff, and although it might be really cool, um, to him, it's not always conducive to this part of the country, and it's not always conducive to snow removal, and it's not always conducive to visibility. And I want that to be mentioned here.
Okay. But we are where we, we are where we are with it right now, so, um, I'd suggest that we move on with that A and B, and I'm going to recommend we approve it.
Brenton, can you, um, pull up the previous drawing for those of us that are looking at a screen?
This one here?
Yeah.
I can zoom off this a little bit too, to see that slide.
It's, it's not that big of a curve, so I'm not going to throw a huge fit on this, but I really want to, um, make that known before additional Platts and whatnot get submitted on this particular area. I have concerns about that.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Okay. Again, we'll combine A and B, so I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary engine report for, and the resolution of necessity for twenty twenty-nine.
Can I get a second on that one? Sarah, you want to do a second on it?
Not really. I'm, I don't really like it.
Do a second.
All right, then I'll do a roll call on this one. Naomi?
Well, I mean, we already approved the plot, so yeah.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
I'm saying no on this one. I don't like it, but I know I'm outnumbered.
You got your voice heard though. That's what I went with here, so.
Thank you.
Let's go on to fifteen. Lucas, what do you got?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, fifteen is just, uh, second reading of the rezone for South Dale Farms Fourth Edition. Rezoning that, uh, property from Egg to R six, no changes. Second reading is required.
Any questions? Was this, nothing changed, so.
Oh, public input or not? I don't know.
No, 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 no public input for this one. We did that at your last meeting where you approved the plat in the first reading of the rezone.
Yep.
So I'm going to look for a motion to accept the second reading, unless there's any questions you guys have. Nothing's changed. All right, I think Naomi made a motion. Can I get a second?
Second?
Yeah.
Fine, good sir.
Yeah. Sarah, you made the second, all right.
Yeah, I gotta do one here.
There you go. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Uh, Lucas, you got the next one.
Yes, this one, Mr. Mayor, is the Uvetcha property in Visto Industrial Edition. This is the second reading of that rezone. Uh, rezoning the property from industrial to, uh, C-three commercial.
Okay.
No change.
No change, so. Any questions? Yeah, who's going to make a motion?
Second.
Jeff does the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 On to seventeen. Liz, you got this one.
Anyway, um, we are asking for some software upgrades and a here to streamline some of our processes. Um, we'd like to merge some of our technology or, yeah, we're asking for some events and merging some of the technology to improve customer service. Um, the main thing, um, this would allow customers to be able to pay their utility bills online, which they could currently can do, but it doesn't connect to our software. Um, this would allow it to, uh, the payments to automatically be posted to the customers' accounts. Um, it'll enable timely billing of a little bit, but it also, the meter reader will allow, um, timely billing of sewer for customers on Casper Water. It'll just, um, streamline the utility, utility billing processing, other payments, speeds processing, reduces errors. Um, the software is compare compatible with all of our current software. And, um, the software includes unlimited support. You don't have to pay extra for that. That's all included. Um, it enables our current staffing levels to be growing speeds, and this is really important because, you know, due to our staffing levels and the workload that we currently have. So we're asking for the Black Mountain software portion. These are add-ons to what we currently have. We're asking for the cash receipting and refund and check processing. But the cash receipting is a piece that we need to, um, enable us to connect with the, enable us to connect to the credit card company so the, um, payments can automatically. And they want to pay like the building permit, the accounts receivable. And, you know, their, I guess, traffic ticket and utility billing, they could do that all at once, and then we could process it through the cash receipting. And currently, right now, for the reset part, we're not allowed, we're not able to actually refund anything. It has to, it's, we basically have to cancel the check and then do a bunch of journal entries, and it's not a very good paper trail. So this would also streamline part of our process. But the other thing that we're looking for, um, as part of this cash receipting process, um, there's a barcode scanner that would, um, come with this whole package, but it would, our utility bills would change a little bit, and they would actually have a barcode on them. So when they pay their bill and they drop off, you know, their, um, payment stub at Casey's or over at City Hall. Um, when we're processing the payment, we can just scan that, bring up their account, and we can post much more quickly. And it also reduces human error, like possibly posting to another account. See if there's anything else, but a lot of this will add, um, in for internal cash control with our to the office. Um, the centralized receipting. It'll help us record transactions more efficiently. Um, the credit card company, this is a little bit, um, different credit card company, but they partner with Black Mountain. This would, um, allow customers to go onto our, our website. But right now, you can do like one-time payments. You, you'll still be able to do one-time payments, but this will allow customers to actually create an account, and it'll save their payment information. They can view their statement. Um, you know, so, and then it also keeps a record of their past payments. Um, there's also a feature that they can, we can actually send out, they can subscribe for alerts too, like if there's no water. Me broken or something like that, or their garbage is like today, or, you know, the garbage was, uh, delayed. So we can send out those alerts. But, um, we, we're also going to get, um, they'll also upgrade our credit card machine that, uh, you can swipe your card, you can use Apple Pay, Pay or any of those other um, type payments, so that'll help boost our technology. But the, um, definitely helps with reconciliation.
Question on that payment services. Is that a separate website or is that somehow through our website?
Through our website. It'll go through our website, but then it'll, uh, right, currently, that's how we have a, um, we're working with another credit card vendor, but then that one doesn't connect to our account.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so we, you could go to the citydivorce.com, pay your bill, and then it'll, um, link to another site. But yeah, well, I guess it's it's linked to their credit card, but it goes to the credit card. And then they can enter their information. That's all they need on their bill is their web ID, which will be added on our bill. And then we have the, um, and the way they're able to view the statement and actually email statements. Um, this is B D S. They would, you know, actually mail, do everything for us if we wanted to pay them. This is just one of the features that we want. Um, our software, we can actually upload a file, and then they convert that to PDF, and then that's the statement that you view.
For the residents that are already like on auto pay?
That wouldn't affect that.
Okay, so you just, it automatically will just roll over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, new, new residents can either opt to do it the other way that we're doing it or this way. This is probably preferred, um, as part of like risk man, or yes, we're kind of pushing, like putting the risk on them.
How would, how would they know what to do though when they move here?
When they move here?
Yeah, how, I mean, you said that they have the option to choose.
Uh, when they, um, when we get the residents, we have a whole checklist that we go through for residents on how to sign up for everything.
I'll stand really quick here and say it. A new resident, new customer, can we store it? Would be directed to go through the block or B D S this approach? Because it, it has the same capabilities to be D C H for a credit card, but the big perk of this is that you're able to actually pull past. So that, that's the biggest perk, and you can see, okay, did I pay my bill? Or like for my house, you know? If my wife would pay the credit card or paid this off, I would, I may not know right away, so look online and see. So.
Where is this information saved? Saved on our side or on the vendor's side?
The.
Well, any of the credit card information and/or the account information.
Yeah, uh, that way the, the, they would be responsible for securing the.
That's what I was getting at, is security.
So then that takes the risk off of us too.
Okay.
And we redirect it from our website. B D S. So it's connected through our website, revise, I'm sure prior, but because that's a link. When they click on it, saying, can you book the utility billing? It looks very similar. We have, but it goes to the PDF.
Okay.
Keep the security with the books and doors.
So anyway, it's a fast, you know, it's but yeah, but that really will help the, help us and help them because it'll immediately, you know, post to their account in real time. So right now, we have to do everything manually.
Okay.
And this is the meter reader that we were talking about. We borrowed this from West Fargo. This process, um, currently, we, um, are relying on Casper Water to give us the meter readings uh, for, to, for us to build sewer. Um, our sewer bills are calculated using meter readings, and so um, that's why we have to plant Casper Water for the sewer only, or not sewer only, our customers that are not on city water. Uh, most of the new developments are all on Casper Water, but they're on our sewer, so this, um, will help us streamline processing those utility bills of you know, but West Fargo, um, West Fargo has taken this approach for several years now, and it's worked out really well. We actually met with their, um, finance director. He came out and we were trying to figure out this, a, a good solution for this because it takes us, uh, currently around three days to go through all of the year readings and enter them manually in our system. The ones that we have that are on our city water, we're able to we, we have a similar reader, and we just upload that data into our current software, and it's done within a, a few minutes. And again, so we want to do the same thing with Casper Water. Um, Casper Water, the other, um, thing that we were talking about, like maybe even adjusting the date of our readings, uh, or when we do our other readings, because Casper Water is a week or two out past what we do our readings, so then that delays the water bills too. But their, um, system is pretty antiquated, so this was the best possible solution that West Fargo came up with, and I believe that would help us out tremendously as well. So it would, um, instead of taking days to cross this, process the bills, you know, we could do that within a few hours. That would definitely streamline the process, so everyone's bills would be done at the same time. We're currently over a month behind on sewer for the Casper Water users. So, you know, at the end of the summer, people are like, um, saying, I haven't, I didn't use that much water, like why is my sewer bill that high? It's because we're, um, I'm on the behind on someone's bills.
So how does this thing work? You have to actually just drive down the street or is it?
Yeah, they just drive down the street and it can read up to fifty meters in a second.
Sounds like a slot machine. Ding 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 ding, unless you put it on you, and it picks up. Every, every meter has a transmitter connected to it, which puts out a meter reading, your frequency.
How do you know if you missed one?
It'll show as a missed read on your account, so you'll get spreadsheet, or it'll say, these did not read.
You have a route you ran through.
Yeah, you have a route that's already put in.
So who, who drives this route? You do?
He relates to that.
Okay.
Uh, ba- basically, one thing I wanted to add on this, or just touch base really quick. The biggest perk of this is the custom of the stop time of entering into data to get the Casper. And the data we get on meter reads is meter reads uh, usage that's over a month old. That's what Liz was explaining, the bills are late. Also, we get the readings, and we do our meter reads typically between the twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth of the month, typically. If we don't get that reading from Casper, it'll tell us the fifth or the tenth, it delays, it's been delaying all utility bills going out. So this is not, this actually gives people greater amount of time to be able to get their bill, to be able to pay it. So that's probably one of the biggest perks of this, and the, this will be beneficial for all those accounts that have Casper Water by AC sewer. That's where you see that.
Right now, we are billing them based on their water usage. Is it at a hundred percent or?
Yeah.
So no matter if they water their yard, they get ding for sewage.
We have a cap process, so if you use more than ten thousand gallons of water, you're capped at ten thousand gallons of sewer.
Yeah.
And that's only if like multi-residential.
Right.
Commercial, it, it's not.
Right, we did that last year.
Yeah.
So the cost, the total cost for the upgrade is, um, nineteen thousand four hundred eighty. Um, it would be broken out between the water fund and the sewer fund. For the software, um, the barcode scanner, card reader and monthly maintenance, that would be fifty fifty between water and sewer. And the meter reader would be all, um, under the sewer fund, maybe five hundred dollars for that. The water fund cost share, five thousand four hundred ninety. Sewer fund is thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety. And then the bills would all be paid out of the revenues from the enterprise funds, not from property taxes. But this would definitely streamline our processes and with the, all of the growths and the all of our new users on Casper Water, um, the workloads is it'll, you know, get through or help, you know, keep our current staffing levels.
So what we're looking at is just, uh, yearly maintenance thing, we're looking at probably about twenty-three bucks down to eighteen. Me, Grant, I don't stake out the water sewer fund, just so everybody understands that this is just a one-shot deal. Some of it is, but for others, uh, the annual, I don't know, it's like annual maintenance agreements.
Corey, you're cutting out just a little bit. I'm, I'm not hearing, um, I heard annual maintenance agreement. Is there or is there not an annual maintenance agreement?
There is. There's going to be about three of them, and it's going to come out to about twenty-three hundred dollars a year. Uh, we split between the water and the sewer fund. And we split between the water and the sewer fund. So.
Okay, um, my other question on this was, uh, was this budgeted for this year, Breton?
We, we budget for some software improvements and being able to handle this. Can the funds support this? Yes, they can. And it's fairly early in the year also with these funds, so.
Okay, then my, my other question, um, I am told that this makes life easier for the administrative staff. And it takes them approximately three days to get all this in. How long does it take? A public works employee to drive the city and take all these readings? Had, does anybody know that or do we have a ballpark on that?
What we'd be able to do is have, we'd even be able to have a manager staff, for example, like staff doing utility building. They would be capable of dragging these out. So, um, if they're, they're.
It'll take an hour and a half to two depending on.
Four hours.
Four hours.
But depending on what we're doing, I mean, this is something that we could give one of the building inspectors. If they gotta go out and do four or five different inspections in different areas in town. Like it'll pick up most of the route as they're just going along. So, yes.
Do you only get one transmitter thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they buy one.
It's a receiver, one, one unit.
Yeah, but going back, it's not just a few hours just for the Casper water. It actually, you know. This would streamline, streamline our payment processes, which, um, right now with all of the manual entry with the credit cards. We'll get, you know, twenty-five to thirty credit, you know, credit card transactions minimum. That take, um, you know, we'll have about twenty-five of them all in the same day. But then five will post one day, um, six will post the next day, you know, and some will post, you know, the third and fourth day. And, um, it's a reconciliation nightmare with this new, um, customer, um, new company. All of the payments will post within twenty-four hours. So, um, that will help us tremendously and, you know, and avoid payments that didn't get posted. And then, um, the way the cash receiving software works also, um, the cash drawer will have to be balanced every day. So that will help us to, you know, keep up on the. Keep them on, keep up on the, of all the reconciliation. So, um, eliminate a lot of the human error. But it's not just a few hours. It's actually going to be several, several hours that will, you know, it'll, and help us provide better customer service too. Cause the way the credit cards, a lot of them have been handled, if we don't get to them right away, sometimes the credit card payments weren't being, or aren't being posted. You know, maybe once a week or every two weeks with the workload that we currently have. So this will help a lot.
No, I mean, I'm for it. I mean, it's all right. We've kind of, we talked about this a little bit. We've got, we've had plenty. Budget. I mean, we do set aside some for these types of things.
We set aside funds to be able to handle software, technology, um, and different improvements for. Um, this will help us be more efficient and more accurate through utility billing. Uh, also utility funds, um, come healthier and they'd be able to support this.
No, this is for saving staff's time and effort manually entering things. And we can go through something like this. This, this, they shouldn't be manually entering this stuff anymore. In 2022, right now, it's time to start getting with the real world, you know, what technology is supposed to do. So.
Yeah, it doesn't sound to me, I mean, we, we do have a, a, a fair cost here. But it sounds to me as if the, um, benefits far outweigh any of the, um. Items that could potentially be a downfall. My biggest concern was, you know, transferring time from one part of the staff to another part of the staff. We're not doing that. I'm told that this is convenient. It can just go out with inspectors or whatever. So, um. I'm thinking that this is probably a very positive thing. I do appreciate the presentation. Because it, uh, it's very thorough and it gives me a, a fairly good idea of what we're spending, where we're spending it. And it's broken down. So we can actually go and see what dollars are being allocated where, not to mention which funds it's coming out of. Good. Okay.
Yeah, and it frees up resources, you know, for the staff. So they don't have to fiddle with this as long and they can do other things. Because again, there's not like a lack of things going on. So, um, so, I mean.
Good.
Any other questions, guys? I mean.
Yeah, another thing I want to point out, in December, we added forty-nine new utility billing customers. And then we've been averaging twenty to thirty new households a month.
That's where it'd be and then just bringing them online. It's just, it's less hassle. So. All right, we'll see if there's any other questions, guys. I don't know.
Make the motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Get a second on that.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. All right, we were spending money. Let's roll call this one. Naomi?
Jeff?
Yep.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, Brett, you got the next one.
Okay, the next one here is for the purchase of a new tractor. As you may recall, towards the end of last year, the budget amendment for the city to, um. Set funds aside in order to be able to purchase a new tractor and snowmob. Yeah, the numbers finally, uh, we have two quotes, one for John Beer, one for JCP, I believe it is.
Yep.
Uh, those came in and staff was recommending the purchase of the JCP. That one came in, uh, plus came in for two twenty-nine, for two hundred twenty-nine thousand. Uh, with a trade in of forty-two thousand, where the John Beer gave him about ten thousand dollars higher roughly. And the trade in was less what they're offering than what the JCP was. With that, you do have some options. So I'll give to the council here. I'm flipping through these a little bit, but trying to get to the base. What we can do is we can either purchase this straight up and it'd be for a hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred. That would be for the JCP and that dollar amount is what we could trade in, I can't put in that. Otherwise you can finance it or a five, six, or seven year credit for a time period. Um, if you're to do that, total cost at five years would be two hundred seven, two hundred seven thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. It goes up over seven years with two hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. We do have enough funds to decide from that budget amendment last year that you can pay for it straight up if you want to. You don't have to finance it. Say it's about twenty thousand dollars.
Um, Breton, just because I don't, um, I'm not doing the math in my head here. What is that interest rate at the five-year term?
It's a five-year term. I don't have the, I apologize. I don't have the interest rate.
The interest rate, I'm Travis.
Travis does the rap from general. Uh, he is here. You do have the rate.
Yeah, uh, I don't have the rate. This is from our, uh, our finance guy Chad. That is the rate he had at the time. Everything is subject to approval. That's his best rate at the time from last Wednesday when I gave Adam the poll. Uh, it is subject to final approval as far as I know, nothing will substantially change as we sit right now. So it'll all depend on the final yes and no. What, if the deal can be done right then, then it'll, you know, the final number. So.
Okay, I think, uh, I think we met when we were testing out some of this equipment. Um, I'm seeing here that there's on the very bottom of the sheet, a thousand hours a year on, uh, potential lease. Is that correct?
You could do a five-year lease, you could do a five hundred hour per year lease. You could do a hundred or a thousand hour per year lease. Or you could just do the dollar buyout lease, which is basically like a, like a loan payment. And then when, when that time period ends, then you pay a dollar and it's yours.
Yep.
Uh. Typically with equipment, we do that approach, the dollar buyout, or we pay for it right up, either one.
Well, yeah, I think it makes sense looking at, uh, the dollars that we're saving between the, the two options. And the fact that staff is recommending the JCP, um, yeah. I'm okay with either one.
And like I said, I mentioned, uh, for council, if you prefer us to finance it, we could. There's options there. Seems, like I said, we have the dollars in the equipment reserve where we could pay for this one straight up. If you'd like to do that, we set the money aside for that very purpose if you want to do that. So either one is fine. We have one to see what, what the council's preference would be.
It was only going to be as if we needed to cash flow something that we could have caught to over the end of the thing. But we, we did set the money aside for this type of deal.
You know, believe, when you have it here, I believe this one came in under what we were budgeting or anticipating. So.
I don't recall if we pre-sized it.
I believe we're at two, two point five or two forty. Can you recall? Was it a penal?
Right.
I think it was two twenty or two twenty-five. It's right in that ballpark though.
Yeah, I can look it up. It's fine.
And this, this here, uh, is just the machine, no additional attachments, just the machine at this time?
That is correct.
Okay.
We do currently, we currently, we do have a snowboard attachment. Same one we were demoing. We have one of those. That is on our New Holland tractor that we have. So we traded New Holland, will attach the snowboard that we have. Uh, do those use it, but then, uh, council had authorized staff to buy that lower two years ago. Yep, yep, two years ago. Pretty sad. It wasn't a year, but just two years ago.
Cool.
Okay, Jeff, what do you have?
Um, I'd be fine just purchasing, purchasing it outright. Um, we don't need to finance it.
Yeah.
Don't. Uh, there's no sense in wasting money on interest.
Sarah, what do you think? Buy it outright?
I'm, uh, I'm accustomed to, um, a lease option just because cash flow needs to be more available. Um, because we budgeted for this, we're not in that position. Um. But I still don't like to paint us in a corner in the event that, let's say we have a spring flood that we need to have something, you know? Um, on this buyout lease option, do those same terms apply with the interest rates? I just wanted to be clear.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, whether you choose the dollar buyout, the five hundred dollar lease, thousand dollar lease, that'll all be the same. It just depends what option you guys like to go with.
Yep, in, in that case, and because we have budgeted for this, it doesn't make sense to spend the extra dollars on the interest. When it's not a necessity at this point. Um, I will reserve that opinion for down the road because circumstances may change. But for this particular item, because I've been in this machine, because I know it, because I had an opportunity to, um. Really go out and touch it and really see it and, and I've talked to Adam and, and.
You let Sarah drive it?
No, they didn't let me drive it. They didn't let me drive it. But I got to see the thing in action. And I've, I've, I've taken actually quite a bit of heat over it, um, you know, just in general, trying to, um. Just share something fun with the community, you know, but, um, in this case, I would say let's not spend any more than we have to.
Yeah, that'd be, that's cool. Um, Sarah, what do you think?
I would, I don't want to waste money after funds.
Okay, then with that, I will look for a motion to accept. We buy it outright.
I'll make that motion.
Next motion, second.
Second.
That's the second. We're buying things again. Naomi? Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, one to nineteen. Sally, do you want to take that one or you want me to?
I am still on. Um, well, I was expecting to be backup, but I can take it if you'd like.
Go ahead and I'll back you up.
Okay, um, let's see. Okay. So of course we all know that in 2023, we're going to be celebrating the hundred and fiftieth birthday. We have started the steering committee. As of November, we started, um, we had our first meeting in November. Our next meeting is on March third. Um, the celebration next year will coincide with our annual bean days. And right now activities are being planned and sponsors, we're planning on contacting sponsors and kind of going about that. Um, in the way that we're going to be, sorry, excuse me. Um, the way that we will be going about, um, bean day sponsors. So we'll give a heads up. Um, I think in this upcoming bean days letter, just to give a heads up about next year's sponsorship. Next page, please. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, so, um. One of the great ideas that we had was to preserve our history of Horus in a beautiful hardcover book. With photos, stories, maps and documents that will use the information from they planted their roots deep. Which was our publication for a hundred years and then our hundred and twenty-fifth publication, watching us grow. Next page. Okay, so I contacted, um, a representative from a place called Friesen's Books. Uh, Corey had had a letter from 2017 that he forwarded to me to see if they were still, they had, uh, an offer back then. Uh, to preserve our history. So I reached out to, to a guy named Kerry. Um, he, uh, so just a background about this company, they're from Canada. They did the Harry Potter book in two thousand four. Um, I went through their website. They have a lot of really good reviews on their website. And, um, good feedback. Um, and you can see that they have, they have good quality for, um, their products. Um, he gave me, um, an overview of what the cost will be. Um, so that's on the next page. Yeah, so that's just, just a graphic to show you the, um, quote that he gave me. Um, if you want to zoom in on that, you can, but on the, uh, for four hundred and fifty books. Um, two hundred ninety-six pages, it's forty-five, fourteen a book. And, um, there are different prices for different amounts, um, that he gave me. You can see on that. I can send that to all of you if you want to take a closer look at, at that. Um, I figured four hundred and fifty books might be the average. Um. Next page, please. Okay, so there are some, yeah, some, um, examples of some of the books that they've done. You've got the soft covers and the hard covers and, um, we kind of talked about the layout of the book. Um, where I would be, I'd collect all of the information for the book, um, or the staff would, the committee would. Um, and, uh, pictures, text, um, would be put into a PDF and sent to them. Um, we could design the inside of the cover. We're talking about doing like an old map on the inside. Um, front cover and then the new map on the back cover inside. Um, he had a lot of good ideas and he gave a lot of, um, examples. If you want to click on products and testimonials, there, there are some good, um. Did you click on it? There's some, um, some more product examples and, um, a lot of good testimonials all over the country. All over in, uh, Canada, in the United States. Um. So I don't know, um. Yes.
They probably recommended, I mean, that was, like I said, I got that letter back in 2017. I kept it on the side. Um, thinking about how and when something like this might come into play. Um, and it seemed to be a good opportunity. And it seemed to be a good opportunity. Like I said, Horace has done a couple of these, they might have done some further back, I'm just not familiar with that, but I do have the hundredth and the hundred and twenty-fifth that they did, uh, contains a lot of history of what has transpired at Horace. Uh, a lot of things have changed in the last twenty-five years, it'd be kind of nice to capture some of that along with the prior history. So, what we're trying to do here is be able to put that together in a nice format, uh, called souvenir format of what happened, you know, the history of the town and things like that, uh, for a hundred and fiftieth, so.
Yeah, it's really beautiful, and I, I know I've seen these books, um, before on my relatives' coffee tables, and I, I personally like to, I enjoy looking at old pictures and I enjoy reading the history of people in towns, and I think it would be a real good way to um, record those stories for future people in Horace, because it is growing so fast, it would be nice for people to not forget the history and the stories that made it what it is.
Right, what I try and, what we like to do is kind of make this an accumulative, uh, deal, if possible, to take someone what the prior history is and break, break this all into one book, possible, that's gonna require a lot of work, I know that, and I have to get more people involved on this thing, but, uh, I think this would be a good, good way to help keep some history and preserve where the town was coming from for people to have, so, that's kind of what we brought to you guys tonight, I wanted to get some thoughts. What you think, what was on this?
I think, were there more slides on there?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so, um, the production, um, so, like I said, we would supply the information, so I already talked about that stuff, so next page. Um, yeah, so the payment is twenty thousand dollars for four hundred and fifty copies. Fifty percent of the quote value is expected when pages are submitted and balances due ten days after receiving the books. Um, and because the books are expected with fifty percent portion, um, they, he, he sent me some order forms where, um, the entity was asking for, um, a deposit beforehand to kind of cover that, to help cover it.
Right, so when did they, I, I should have looked at that sheet again, but when did that payment, because you, I was thinking too that, you know, we probably don't need the books delivered until probably July of two thousand twenty-three.
Yep. That is, that is the timeline, I told him, so, so then we would have to submit the, um, the material um, by May first, if we wanted it, you know, because it, I believe it was like a two-month turnaround. So, that would also be the timeline, so like about a little over a year to do it.
Yep, and that is not a lot of time, I know that.
I kind of got nervous when I said that, I just, I was like, whoa.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, I'm assuming sponsor money's gonna be paying for this?
That's what we can discuss.
Okay, also.
Because it'll have to get fronted to some degree, obviously, because this will be, these will be for sale.
They're for sale?
Will be for sale, these are, some will be pre-ordered.
So, also, do we have to use somebody out of Canada? I mean, can't we be American? Sorry, like, I like to, um, buy American, I mean, why are we going to Canada?
Uh, because these can work, perhaps, or options.
I mean, I don't want to make my work for them, so we either, but, I mean, I personally would like to see us utilizing something in America, I mean.
Okay.
Just my thoughts on that, maybe?
Okay. Jeff, you have any thoughts on that?
Thoughts would be to, uh, have some sort of, um, request from the public to see how many copies would be able to be sold, um, just to make sure we do not buy too many. Um, I don't know how many were, uh, sold previously, if you guys did a, a, a book for the hundred and twenty-five year or a hundred year?
I can see, maybe to find out, but of course, our demographics have changed substantially since then.
Correct. Um, and I've realized that, you know, if you have less copies, obviously, the price per book is probably going to go up. So, I did, I just want to make sure we don't have a ton of extra books, so.
Sally, if I remember correctly, is a four fifty, was that their minimum order, or was it lower than that? I can't remember.
Sorry, um, that was, the minimum order was a hundred and fifty bucks.
Yep.
Um, and, yeah, so, I mean, I think we can order less than, and then just let people order after that. Is what I think can happen, so we could order something lower.
Yeah, but I'm guessing they're gonna charge more for the books that they start coming in at one piece.
Yeah.
Even though they have it sitting there, they'll, they'll charge more for that, so. Sarah, you got any thoughts on this one?
Um, I'm putting in my pre-order, I am really, really excited about this. I can't wait to read about the history of Horace if this is approved. Um, furthermore, I'm a big history buff, um, I, I share Naomi's sentiment that we need to buy American, and I would like to see this, um, above and beyond just the simple concept, maybe we could do something where we find a company, um, a lesser deposit is required, and people can do their own ordering online, so the liability or the lion's share of the burden isn't necessarily on the city. I don't know how that all works, we'd have to do a little looking into it, and I don't want to waste a ton of time, because I agree, a year isn't a lot of time to put this together, but, um, I'd love to see this concept expounded on for the hundred and fiftieth, and I would absolutely die to see something put together, uh, and potentially used as a display in, um, what may end up being a future city building, uh, city hall or something like that. Um, I, I really think that there's a lot of opportunity here, but that's my initial thoughts as I see this. Um, I would like to remove the liability of cost from the city if possible, I realize there's gonna be some. Um, and maybe there's some editing or a local company that can do some of that for us, so that the deposit goes down, I don't know. Um, it might be worth a few phone calls here in the next week or two, my initial thoughts.
Okay, and that's fine, I mean, if somebody wants to do some research on this beyond what I've done, that's fine, I have a problem with that. Like I said, this is just what Sally and I kind of came up with after realizing this is probably something that we're, we're gonna want to do for this hundred and fiftieth, so. Um, I'm not actually asking for any action today if we don't want to proceed with this, it's just more, let's get this on the table. We do not have the luxury of time to spend, you know, this is, this could come, but realize that we do have to make a decision on this probably. By the end of the year, I'd like to know what we're gonna be doing as far as which publisher and things like that. In the meantime, the history needs to go along, we need to get a committee together and get this nailed down, because we don't have time. So, any other thoughts or questions, otherwise we'll move on, because like I said, I don't expect us to do, I just wanted to make sure this is in front of you guys. You want to do this?
No, the, the only other thoughts I have, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, that's, I didn't, I didn't mean to say that we had to make a decision tonight, I just want this in front of you guys. You understand what we're up against as far as timeline, some commitments, and then probably some costs, so, okay.
Yeah, I, I love this, um, it's super exciting, I have read books from, um, communities that my folks grew up in, um, just south of Horace and, uh, to the east, uh, my mother's from Minnesota, and I can honestly say that, um, I am so looking forward to our hundred and fiftieth, this is going to be a wonderful and exciting time for Horace. Um, this is an excellent place to start, thank you.
All right, we'll move on, Jim, go ahead, number twenty.
One thing I'll leave you with is we're gonna have to gather the bag earlier for the meeting with school, the county, and, uh, other developers in the next coming weeks to try to coordinate everything that's happening, just smaller.
Okay, Brett, what do you got?
Hey, uh, City Hall, three mile update, drywall is progressing, I believe they're nearly complete. Fortunately, the weather hasn't been able to stop either today. Right now, our schedule looks like, uh, you can potentially be able to go back in, uh, early, mid, and April, it's going to be now. So, the contractor has, like, what he's indicated, able to be done with it, uh, keep on trying to push, and the weather will cooperate with some of that.
Yeah, nice.
So, because I, I did drive by there today and it's, they, they weren't working, just didn't see anything when I got by.
Oh, there's no travel advice, I'm not gonna do it.
I actually don't see them updating.
They've been, they've been there most days, weekdays last, like, last week and the week before. Uh, for drywall, we haven't had big massive repairs there that were, uh, uh, but, so, they, we do have updates on our, uh, team's drive there for everybody, for the council, so if you want to see that, you're able to see that.
Say one more. You got, all right. Let's see portfolios, uh, we're gonna be meeting, Brett and I are gonna be meeting with the Realtor group tomorrow morning, trying to give an update on what's been going on in Horace. So that they're all aware and go back and tell their constituents about what's going on down here. Brett and I are gonna be meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, gonna have an update on the different topics throughout the town here that we want to be aware of. Um, we also are having an upcoming meeting with, uh, HBA, the same thing, we'd like to get on the same page with things that are going on down here. That discussion we haven't had, not at all. Uh, we also have set up some meetings with our district representatives, want to get the new representatives up to speed on everything that is currently going on here. And possibly some, uh, bills and different, uh, things that we'd like to see pushed through with the next legislative cycle. Yeah, that's it, Sarah, what do you got, anything?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
I certainly can.
Okay, I think everybody knows I was out playing in the snow with Public Works most recently. I'm pretty excited to have an opportunity to take a look at some of the equipment and some opportunities that we may have. Uh, I too am also looking forward to getting involved in the legislative session. Um, kind of figuring out the same thing, what is upcoming, uh, what we can do for them, what they can do for us, and how we move forward in, uh, a partnership of sorts, if you will, just building relationships, I guess, is the way I would put it. Um, so we, we have a lot of fun things upcoming, and then I'm very much looking forward to getting back to town and having an opportunity to catch up once again with planning and zoning, but I did have an opportunity before I left to catch up on, uh, development, which was good and, and very lengthy, we have a lot coming, so very exciting things happening in Horace, that's all I have.
Okay, sounds good, Naomi, what do you got?
A hundred and fiftieth, steering committee is meeting coming up soon, March third, um, at seven o'clock at the Horace Church, um, so we have had a few more people interested in coming to that, so, um, hopefully we can get some more volunteers. Um, I'm going to be going to the park for meeting, whenever that one is coming up, um, to talk about the upcoming Easter event.
Okay, sounds good. Little season on here, Jeff, what do you got?
Uh, whole lot tonight, um, not a whole lot from, uh, Metro Cod that I would report back about. Um, I did enjoy their presentation tonight, um, it did bring up, uh, a lot of information, but also a lot of questions as far as, um, how things are gonna play out with all the constructions on, so. I, uh, look forward to seeing, uh, and hearing more from them on that, and then other than that, and that's it, so.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to adjourn.
Jeff makes a motion to adjourn, I think it's second, we'll be all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're done.
Aye.
Cheers, Sarah, have a safe trip, back up here when you get, you get back.
Thank you so much, hopefully, uh, the wind and the snow will have calmed down by then.
That would be nice.
Take good care.
Good night, all. Bye.
Good night.